Today, Tuesday, March 7, 2023. I call this regular meeting at all meeting to order at 6:32 PM. Pleasure of the region lead by Councilmember Menchaca.
Please stand. Face the flag. Ready, begin.
Clerk, roll a card, please.
Mayor Ding.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Chan.
Here.
Councilmember Menchaca.
Here.
Councilmember Wu.
Here.
We will now have some announcement from our chief city clerk.
Tonight's meeting is live streamed on cable channel three and our online platforms. If you wish to address the city council during tonight's meeting, we request that you please complete a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk. When speaking, please state your name for the record. If you wish to be added to the distribution list to receive city council agendas, please email your request to cityclerk@sgch.org.
First item, approve the agenda order. Are there any objection to the agenda order? I hear none. The agenda order is approved. Next item, please.
Presentations, Women's History Month. Councilmember Menchaca will make the presentation.
Thank you so much. I wanted to say a few words. First of all, I'm very proud to announce that the city council has issued a proclamation recognizing March as Women's History Month. The proclamation recognizes the role and contributions of women to the city of San Gabriel and to society throughout history. One of the whereas statements included in the proclamation reads as follows. "American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolition movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all." In other words, women give everyone the support they need to be successful. The 2023 National Women's History theme is celebrating women who tell our stories. This timely theme honors women in every community who have devoted their lives and talents to producing art, pursuing truth, and reflecting the human condition decade after decade. Tonight, I invite you to join me in celebrating and highlighting the women who make up the San Gabriel City Hall family. They are department heads, first responders, city staff at all levels, and commissioners. These women are powerhouses. They enhance the quality of life to the general public. They ensure our city departments are running efficiently and effectively, and they encourage civic participation as commissioners and leaders in our community. So tonight, I'm going to ask these women, the San Gabriel City Hall family of women, to please come up so we can take, so we can recognize you, take a group photo with tonight's proclamation, and then I will turn to my colleagues, the councilmen, to join us in a second photo. So please, I see commissioners and I see a lot of staff, please come up.
Yeah, congratulations. I form I remember tomorrow also is called the International Women's Day. And next item, please.
Is the time set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council? If you wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk. Mr. Mayor will start this evening with the comments that were received by email.
Okay.
The first comes to us from San Gabriel resident and here Commissioner Vicki Goto. "Given the escalating housing crisis across Southern California, it would be irresponsible and arguably immoral not to require all new housing development projects, both rental and for sale in the city of San Gabriel, to include an absolute minimum of 10% of affordable housing units for low and moderate income households. In addition, incentives should be offered to developers who commit to 15% to 20% affordable housing units, such as expedited processing and potentially waiving or discounting some fees in addition to the density bonuses provided by the state. Developers should not be given the opportunity to contribute money to an affordable housing fund as an alternative because those housing units are not actually built for decades, if at all. Developers will figure out how to make a profit on their projects. They are very talented in that regard, but they will do it in the easiest way available to them. Without an IHO, no affordable housing will ever be built. There was a lot of consideration given to the hardships this would cause for the developers, but the real issue is whether San Gabriel chooses to be an inclusive and thriving community where all are welcome. Cities need young people and families to continue to grow, but if none can afford to live here, then San Gabriel will stagnate and become a relic of the past. Here are some facts the city council should consider. As Commissioner McMora stated, half of all renters spend 30% or more of their income on housing, which is considered cost burdened. Of that group, almost one-third spend 50% or more of their income on housing, which makes them severely cost burdened and leaves insufficient funds for other basic essentials. Los Angeles County currently has an extreme shortfall of affordable housing with over half a million new units needed to satisfy the demand of lower-income renters, according to the Southern California Association of Nonprofit Housing. People ages 65 and older are the fastest-growing age group of people who are homeless, and the American Society on Aging estimates that the number of unhoused seniors will triple by 2030. Increasing affordable housing will benefit the whole community by providing greater economic growth, better health outcomes, and decreasing homelessness. It will strengthen the social cohesion of this city's residents, half of whom are renters, but have no representation on the city council yet. The question is, will the city of San Gabriel be a leader in addressing the housing crisis by instituting an inclusionary housing ordinance right now when it is urgently needed, or will it continue to be part of the MIMBY problem? Thank you." The next comment is from Kathy Chavez-Morris, here Commissioner. "Good evening. As a new here Commissioner, I want to emphasize the importance of access to affordable housing. According to census data, approximately 12.5% of the population of San Gabriel lives at or below the poverty line. With the median price of homeownership hovering around $900,000 in the LA area, people are being effectively priced out of homeownership. As homeownership becomes more complex, with home values outpacing increases in income, local government will need to answer the call to require affordable housing options. In California, 36% of homeowners and 48% of renters spend more than one-third of their household income on housing. Nearly 32% of working renters spend over half their income on housing. This means people we pass by every day are forced to choose between basic necessities, such as food, clothing, transportation, and medical care. These people are teachers, veterans, elderly neighbors, janitors, baristas, cooks, cashiers, et cetera. They are often the frontline workers who ensured our economy didn't collapse when many of us had the privilege of working from home. We need to stop acting as though affordable housing is a handout. It's an opportunity to provide a safety net to some of our most vulnerable neighbors. We have a responsibility as elected officials, civil servants, business owners, and residents to ensure that no one has to choose between a home over their head and food in their belly." The next comment is from Jackie Borja. "My name is Jackie Borja, and I have been San Gabriel homeowner for over 20 years, and I have served the families of San Gabriel as a high school counselor at Gabriolino High School for the last 27 years. At its peak, Gabriolino High School had close to 1,900 students. Over the past several years, there has been decreasing enrollment, not only at Gabriolino but throughout the school district. Gabriolino's student population is now in the 1,500s. We have seen an increase in homeless families as well as families who are doubling up living together because they cannot afford the increasing rent and home prices. The city council should evaluate the 10% and 15% affordable housing option. Thank you for your consideration." The next comment is from Alejandra Benavides. And reads as follows. "This email addresses the joint study session outcome on the Affordable Housing Agenda item that took place on Thursday, March 2, Agenda 1. My name is Alejandra Benavides. I am a city of the city of San Gabriel since 1967. Since then, the city has grown and changed. There was a time with both average and low-income residents could afford to live in our city. New construction, corporations, and large developments, without consideration for the less affluent, have monopolized our city. Home is sacred. We all deserve to have a safe, affordable roof over our heads. When 59% of LA County residents are rent burdened, that sacred right is threatened. No one should have to choose whether they can pay rent, buy groceries, or pay their medical bills. For far too many families in California, in Los Angeles, and in our San Gabriel, this is a daily reality. It is time to correct the situation. It is time to develop low-income housing in the vacant land of the city of San Gabriel, housing that all can afford and where all can survive in their sacred home. Thank you for your attention." The next comment is from Evelyn Torres Rangel, San Gabriel resident. "My husband and I are retired teachers. We have lived in San Gabriel for over 44 years. We bought our home in 1978 for $55,000. We added another $150,000 in two remodeling jobs. Our house is now 2,400 square feet. Our sons attended McKinley Elementary, Jefferson Middle, and Gabriolino High Schools. The first eight years of our sons' lives, we were able to live on one of our teachers' salaries while the others stayed home with our boys. In 1994, we both began teaching at Gabriolino High School when it opened. We both have since retired from there. We had the wonderful experience of living and teaching in San Gabriel. We had a sense of community with our students and their families, and we have remained in contact with many of our former students and their parents. In addition, after retirement, my husband and I have volunteered as math and computer science tutors at Gabriolino. But what we have seen is, over the years, is numerous San Gabriel Unified Teachers unable to afford to live in San Gabriel. We have lost many excellent teachers simply because they cannot afford to live here. I believe we, as a community, benefit greatly when our teachers live here and raise their children in our San Gabriel schools. As such, I support an ordinance that would provide 15% of both rental and sale properties to low- and moderate-income households. Thank you." The next comment is from Chastity Jennings Nunez. "As was repeatedly emphasized, the night of the joint planning and city council meeting on March 2, the majority of residents in San Gabriel are renters with nearly 60% of households in San Gabriel falling into the low-income level. Over half of our households spend a third or more of their income on housing costs. Even though 90% of the comments at the March 2 meeting supported, argued, and pleaded for the city of San Gabriel to address the severe lack of affordable housing, the majority of the planning commissioners and city council members seemed unfazed. The lack of responsiveness or desire to represent the majority of San Gabriel's residents is astoundingly problematic. The consultant company came back with information on whether they felt requiring a level of affordable housing was feasible to support the profits desired by developers, and were not asked to come back with a way to make affordable housing requirements feasible as they have in numerous surrounding cities. The difference in the question may be subtle, but the answer would have been profoundly different. As was pointed out, the decision comes down to one of priorities and values. Does the city council represent developers who don't live in our city or the needs of the residents? Actions speak louder than words, and we are intently watching your actions." That concludes the email comments. Now, we do have several speakers. The first is Edith Gonzalez.
Hi, good evening. My name is Edith Gonzalez. It's an interesting topic I'm hearing because I'm here to talk about the pentathlon, but I don't live in your city because I can't afford to live in the city, but my children attend the schools here. I'm also a teacher at Gabriolino High School. I'm here to speak about the pentathlon because my children have been involved in it, I believe, since its inception. My oldest son participated in March of 2017 because his little brother, who was a second grader, was going to participate. Elijah is now an eighth grader at Jefferson. He has participated in every pentathlon that has happened, with the exception of COVID got canceled. We were anticipating being able to participate this year. I was told we were going to have one, and I just found out, I believe, last week, that middle schoolers are not included in the pentathlon this year. I am deeply disappointed. We love this city. I probably spend 95% of my time in the city of San Gabriel with everything I do with Gabriolino and my children. My son was looking forward to the pentathlon this year as an eighth grader. It will be his last opportunity before he heads to Gabriolino, and he's not going to have that opportunity. Elijah has represented this city all the way through the San Gabriel Valley Championships and the Southern California Championships as a second, third, and fourth grader. We are very proud of that. He has received an award from this city for doing so. My older son won his first pentathlon that year as an eighth grader, and almost five years to the date, won his first college track meet. He is now an NCAA All-American, so he has gone to nationals. And I often wonder if Dominic would have pursued track had he not participated in the pentathlon. I'd like to think that that's where his passion started, and he realized that. And so, I don't know if the city council can do anything about that. Registration closes on the 10th. The pentathlon is on the 25th. I don't know if the middle school students can be included. As a teacher of Gabriolino High School, Jefferson is the only middle school that we have publicly. There are some private schools. But Parks and Rec has offered my children and my students so many opportunities to explore their options in sports, and I'm really disappointed to see that track and field is not going to be offered to them as a possibility. So if there is something you can do, I would really appreciate it. If not, maybe next year's middle schoolers can participate again. Thank you."
Our next speaker is Sylvia Templer.
Hello again. I won't get emotional tonight. I just, like I said, I've been taking a crash course on inclusionary housing. And so I wanted to go over what I found in in the city planning, the staff, not the city planning, the staff of San Gabriel City. Delivered a report September 6, 2022. And on page two of that report, they wrote that 797 more units for low income were needed, 266 more units for, sorry, the first one was very low, 266 for low income and 450 more for moderate income. And I think that's both for sale and rental. And then on page 18 of the same report, Attachment A, under Financial Feasibility Results, Rental Prototype, it's a quote. "When the state density bonus is applied, the rental prototype is estimated to support an inclusionary housing requirement of up to 24%." Not 10, not just for sale, 24%. I really enjoyed reading their report. I found it very positive and inclusionary. And on page 32 and 33 of the LWC recommendations, there are four tables. This is the PowerPoint that they passed out last week. Two are, two tables are without the density bonus, and two are with the density bonus. And they show that the rental prototype is feasible with the density bonus of 15% to 20%. Maybe it says 24, I'm not going to say, but I know it's more than 10%. And that's the rental prototype. Both reports support the notion that rental prototypes are feasible with the density bonus applied. That's basically all I want to say. The letters that have already been read are wonderful. Please take the time to speak, this is my recommendation, because you have two months. Please take time to speak with developers that have already used the density bonus to their favor because these developers exist. There are developers who've built rental units with inclusionary housing up to 24% and made a profit. I hope you'll include rentals in your housing ordinance. Thank you."
The next speaker is Senia Lubasic.
Good evening, and thank you. I'm here to speak to, or to read a comment that I had submitted for the Thursday meeting that unfortunately, due to a glitch, did not get read. And so when glitches happen, legs work, and here I am. So this is, again, addressing the item that has been much discussed by my neighbors and colleagues as commissioners this evening. And I've been very grateful for the ability to hear their comments and much of what they've shared. I, too, am concerned about the decisions being made around inclusionary housing in our ordinance. And in reading the staff report, I was struck by two pieces of data in particular. First, that median condominium prices in San Gabriel are third compared to surrounding cities, behind South Pasadena and Pasadena, but ahead of Alhambra and Clermont. And second, that our rental prices are the lowest among that cohort of cities. And so, in a state where the housing crisis is a daily, if not hourly, topic of discussion and debate, I'm very concerned that we might not do our best to have a representative amount of low-cost affordable housing as part of our inclusionary housing ordinance. And it makes me question, who is this ordinance really intended to include? The rationale that I could find in the staff report showed the threshold at which developers would no longer pursue a project in San Gabriel. So I can only assume that in thinking about inclusion, we are seeking to include developers, not necessarily a broad range of individuals and families who might like to make San Gabriel their home. Because we provide some of the lowest rental options among neighboring cities, we also have the opportunity to capture those renters as long-term residents, people who live, shop, play, and contribute to the city. Despite promises at the outset of a project, developers rarely offer that long-term investment in the fabric of our city, the thing that makes us unique and gives us our character. I urge, in the case of Thursday's meeting, the planning commission, but now tonight, council, to adopt a rate of low income and affordable housing as part of our inclusionary housing ordinance that keeps our residents and provides a pathway to homeownership in our city. Thank you."
The next speaker is Erlinda Romo.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. I'm here to speak in favor of inclusionary housing for both ownership and rental. I'm a former city of San Gabriel employee. I also worked in economic development and in the Playhouse District. I know about development. Developers will figure out, if they want to make a project, if it's feasible or not. And going back to the days when redevelopment was here in the state of California, there was an inclusionary housing mandate for any residential project that was made. If you had, if you were building residential, you had to do 10% inclusionary housing. And from what I remember when I worked in redevelopment is that rental projects were more feasible than ownership projects. So I would like to request that the study group look at the newer residential projects basing their rent because newer projects have a premium. Like the previous speakers have said, I don't want to repeat everything, but developers will figure out how to make things work feasible for them. They will not break ground. You know, they will figure it out, and that's why they get a density bonus. So with that, I am going to conclude my comments at this time. Thank you for your attention.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes the comments on this item.
Okay. All right. Next item, please.
Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or public requests separate discussion. We have not received requests from the public to pull any items.
Would any council member like to pull any item for the separate discussion? Do I have the motion for this item?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Motion made by the councilmember Menchaca.
Second.
Second by the vice mayor Harrington. Next item, please. Oh, please, Wu, sorry.
Motion passes by vote of 5-0.
Okay. Too fast. Next item, please.
We have no public hearing or continued business this evening. Our next item is new business item A, Small Business Assistance Grant Programs, General and Relocation Assistance. Economic Development Manager Caroline Bullarde will make the presentation.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. Based on council's direction at the January 17, 2023 city council meeting, staff has developed a third round of the Small Business Assistance Program. This program has a budget of $175,000, and there are two components, general assistance and relocation assistance. 38 eligible businesses would be awarded grants of $2,500 for general assistance, and eight eligible businesses would be awarded grants of $10,000 for relocation assistance. As you can see, these requirements are very similar to previous rounds of the grant that the city has had. A new requirement is that for general assistance is that the business have 10 employees or fewer as opposed to five in the past. And for both grants, staff is recommending that the business must not have received previous funding from the city's other grant programs. For relocation, businesses contemplating relocation but have not yet moved are ineligible to apply. In addition to these requirements, businesses must submit with their application a current lease or purchasing agreement dated Jan 1, 2022 or later, indicating their new location in the city, and the previous lease or agreement dated before the current one, indicating the business was in another location in San Gabriel. Here's a proposed timeline for administering the program. The difference between the two is the timeframe. So the relocation assistance program will run much longer because one of the requirements is that the business must have moved and be operating at the new location. So we wanted to give businesses enough time to do that during most of this year. Following anticipated approval, staff will jump into a promotional period, and beginning April 6, we will begin and beginning April sixth, we will begin accepting applications. So for general assistance, it will be a three-week application period and nine months for relocation. The program will be publicized in the city's business e-newsletter, our web pages, and social media channels. In pursuant to council direction at the January seventeenth meeting, staff will also create application tutorial videos that will be available on the website to educate folks on how to apply for the program online. And of course, all materials, including the application and guidelines, will be translated in Chinese and Spanish. The budget of a hundred seventy-five thousand will come from the city's general fund. Staff recommends that the council authorize the program and adopt Resolution twenty-three dash ten, appropriating the funds in the general fund. Alternatives to the staff recommendation are outlined in the report before you. This concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Does any council member have the factual question for staff to clarify the report?
I do.
Councilmember Manchaca.
All right. First question is, it didn't say if, if we don't get enough applicants, whether it's for the relocation grant or the general business assistance grant. Does that mean, let's say we get zero for relocation, does that extra monies go to the other grant? Or vice versa? Or what, what would we do?
I don't think that was decided. However, the process administratively would be to continue accepting applications until we have a sufficient amount, if, if it got to that. So I know I outlined a three-week period first for applications and then a nine-month period. But I think the idea is we just continue, we'd keep that open until we got some applications.
But at some point, if we're not getting any, would we, I know we have a hundred and seventy-five thousand, we divvied it up, but at some point, do we decide? And maybe it'll never happen, but I think we need to decide, what do we do with those monies? You know, just give it to the others? Because I, I think we're going to have quite a few for the assistance grant. Because those, we've always had lots of applicants. The relocation gets a little tricky. And so I can see a scenario where, you know, no one's, or we have monies left over. And so I would just like to see that be transferred over to the assisting grant. But it doesn't say, it doesn't say what happens. Any help, Mark?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. That's exactly what we would do, Councilwoman Manchaca. So if, if it's as you anticipate, that we receive more applications for the smaller twenty-five hundred dollar grant, we would keep those applications on hand. And then at the end of the year, if we have money left over for the relocation assistance grant, we would come back to council for direction. But we would recommend giving the remaining money to those over-subscribed folks.
So would that be a consent agenda? Or would that be, we would start all over again with a business or agenda item of sorts?
No, we would do it at that time as a consent agenda item, just to get authorization to do that. If we find out sometime in the next couple of months that we're not getting enough applications, then we would, as Caroline said, we would keep the application process open and try to advertise, to try to get more applications. And if it just wasn't working, then we would come back to council and get authorization to close the program and put that money back into the general fund, fund balance.
Okay, great. My second question for the marketing and outreach, we typically, well, we, we translate Chinese, Spanish, Chinese, and also Vietnamese. And I noticed it didn't show Vietnamese, and I know we have quite a few Vietnamese businesses. Is there a reason we left them out?
Oh, no reason at all. We can definitely do that.
Okay. Well, I mean, I mean, I'm assuming my colleagues agree with me, there is value in the translation Vietnamese, right? Okay. And then, let's see. The other, okay, one more on the clarifying. It says here, again, back to the marketing outreach, that recipients will be notified by mail, email, or phone. And it concerns me because when we had that meeting with the business owners, and I know it was different, it was about notifications, it was during Focus Plaza, it was at the Playhouse. Mail didn't seem to be very reliable. And if we're handing out money, I would think phone would be the very first thing we would do. I know it's a smaller number, it's thirty-eight, I don't think it would take that long. But it concerns me that would be mailing out the announcement, hopefully we'll mail out a check in that envelope. But I just think phone is, is still reliable, it's more direct. Email would be good, just to say, please call us. And then mail, you know, would be my last choice. But has there been any discussion and what really makes sense? Or maybe the experience you've had in that, we, you know, this is our third grant. Is that the way we did it? We just sent them a ma, a letter and hope they get it and understand it?
The common practice from the previous programs, at least when I was here, was we would call and email.
Okay, calling I understand, but it was listed, it had mail, email, or phone. So maybe it was just the order that kind of threw me, but I just felt like it should be listed by priority or more, the most effective. And I think phone is the most effective. And then email, and then hopefully they get mail, and hopefully they understand it, too.
Yeah, we can certainly clarify and update this language so it's clear that our preferred and methods in the past have been phone and email. Okay.
Great. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. So. Any clarify the question? Councilmember Wolf?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Dean. Yes, thank you so much, Caroline, for the presentation. I wonder, do you have a number that shows approximately that how many more qualified general assistant grant applicants? I mean, or we call possible business owners that will have, you know, for the third round grant application?
Oh, well, based on the previous two programs, staff kept a list of, I think, there were hundreds of businesses that were eligible. Of course, only fifty-eight from the last round received the grant. So I'd say we still have a pretty good amount that are eligible, and especially opening it up to ten, or businesses with ten employees or less, that opens it up even more. So I, I, I think we have a really good number of businesses that would be eligible and actually apply.
I see. And for relocation grants, that within the city of San Gabriel, the business must be in good standing with this, in our city. So for those businesses that have temporarily closed due to the COVID, or because they relocated, they would need to have a, you know, tenants improvement. They may apply for CUP, or, you know, maybe final approval for their business license. Will their application be disqualified because in the middle, from the day they run the business until they open a new business, and there is like interruptions of their violent business license? Would that be an issue?
Well, what, the requirement that we are implementing is that they ha, they at least be open at, on January first, two thousand and twenty-two. So that's.
If they closed, you know, from, you know, sometime on, like, from January two thousand and twenty-two, but they probably closed like a few months in the middle, sometime in March.
That's certainly something we could evaluate on a case-by-case basis.
So there will be like a further investigation? If they submit an application and the, the permit is not continuously for a whole year long?
Yeah, I think we can, we can look into certain cases, just depending on their circumstances, where they could be in the entitlement process or in the permitting process. It's a case by case.
Case by case. So my, another one is, you know, in the past, I have heard a lot of cases where the original corporation or LLC that formed the business, it was dissolved due to the, you know, different opinions among the business shareholders during the pandemic, or because the financial impact caused by the eviction and relocation. Because when they moved to the new location, they would need to spend more, either for their deposit, for their tenants improvement, and all facility. So if we say, you know, the remaining business owner set up a new corporation and continued their business in a new location in our city, how can they prove that they, their relocation is legitimate?
Well, we would certainly just, again, do it case by case. And then as part of the application, we are stating that, and making it clear that staff may ask for additional pertinent documentations that will help us support our decision on whether or not to award the grant. So such additional documentation is what we may ask to verify that.
Because sometimes the shareholders just walk away because they don't want to keep losing the money. So some people will remain on their business, and they would like to continue in a new location. So that's pretty much I need to know. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so I have clarified report. I think for the relocation, you say if the previous receiver CDBG fund, I know that two thousand five hundred looks like excluded this kind of business. For me, it looks like maybe it's not really fair for them to. Is it possible under your guideline, so if they receive it, would you subtract that this two thousand five hundred based on this ten thousand? Maybe it's still increased they come in, they already relocated with our city?
Thank you, Mayor. We could absolutely do that as an option. We could just add to the language that it would be deducted from that previous amount?
Yeah, that sounds like maybe fair, fair for the people they already get.
And if we wanted to get creative, we can even put that amount towards one more of the twenty-five hundred dollar grant.
To fall for somewhere else, too. Yeah, okay. So, okay. And, okay, it's now time for the council discussion. Who would like to start it? Oh, public comments, sorry. Chief City, do we have any public comments?
No comments on this, this item, Mayor.
Okay, then it's now time for the council discussion. Who would like to start it? Councilmember Chan?
You know, I've, I've been thinking about this and looking at it. Now, the way we're structuring it looks like we're giving chunks of seventy-five hundred, or twenty-five hundred dollars. And, and it's just a flat amount. And I was starting to think, it might be a little more equitable if we decide to, and I don't know if it's possible to structure it this way, to put in as a requirement that the businesses that are applying show that they've actually paid sales tax into our city over the last year. Because, for example, if you have a small business, and they, they haven't, over the last year, haven't contributed very much sales tax to us, maybe say, I don't know, for example, five hundred dollars, but then we're going to give them a twenty-five hundred dollar chunk, then it doesn't seem fair that maybe there's another business that, that, for example, one of our hotels, that really does contribute a lot of tax money to us, and they would get the same amount. And so I was thinking, would, would it be possible to put in language that there's a cap, maybe a cap of twenty-five hundred dollars? And, you know, depending on how much sales tax that you contributed to the city over the last year. Would that be a possible way of doing that?
That would be a council policy decision. We can absolutely write the policy that way if that's what the majority of council wants. I would just caution you, though, that then you're limiting, limiting it only to retail and restaurant businesses and not to businesses like, you know, an attorney or a accountant, or somebody that doesn't do retail sales. And so that would be lowering the universe of businesses you might be helping. But again, that's a policy decision for council.
Right.
How about a city attorney that have some?
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. The other city manager is obviously correct. It is a policy decision legally. You could, you could write conditions that you wish. A small contribution in sales tax to the city could also be an indication that the business is in trouble and needs help, which would potentially affect the amount that you provide to that business. Maybe doing the reverse that you're intending for it to do. Just an observation. Legally speaking, you, you could put conditions on, on the grants related to sales tax.
Okay, well, that's just a thought I had right now. But I'll entertain any other ideas from the council members and continue our discussion.
Okay. Vice Mayor Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to get back to the reason this started in the first place, which was during COVID. We were trying to help businesses that the state and the county were shutting down. This is the same agenda where we're saying there's no more emergency. So I'm trying to figure out what's the reason anymore. Businesses are always going to be going out of business, new businesses are always going to be starting. Businesses are going to struggle. And what Councilmember Chan just made me think, we, our rate is one percent, what we collect back. So my quick math in my head, a business has to contribute, has to have gross receipts of about two hundred fifty thousand dollars to pay that back, back to the city. So if the idea is doing, keep businesses live and to keep them going, I'm not so sure how much help two thousand five hundred is because to make that kind of revenue, it's, obviously you're going to need, if it's one year, twenty thousand plus a month in sales. If it's spread over a few years, a little less than that. If you're making those kind of sales and you're in twenty-five hundred is the difference between you making it or not making it, I don't know what we're, what kind of help we're giving. So me personally, I don't see the reason to continue this. We did two rounds. I was kind of on the fence on the second round. I was thinking the first round was like, okay, we received this money, it's during COVID. The, the thing here is, yes, it will help some businesses provide a service to our community. But it's going to very specific people, and it's very locally localized. Whereas if we spent this money on something else, perhaps it helps more people. So it's a policy decision. I don't think I can support just saying, you're eligible because you met these requirements, and here's some money. I don't know how that's helping the population of our city, other than this business. If, if it is keeping this business alive a little bit longer, okay, then if you had a good business model, or there was some sort of reason that people wanted to go to your business, it would survive anyway. We're out of the hole, the government's still shutting you down, forcing mask mandates, forcing social distancing, forcing all the stuff we've done. We're not, we're declaring that's over, so we're declaring the market's back open. To me, I just don't think I can support it. Because that's just my opinion. I, I think if, if your business is so fragile that it needs twenty-five hundred to stay in business, I don't know that that's a good investment on our side from the city. I, I can't support that.
Councilmember Wolf?
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe I have one more question for Caroline. I mean, so far, we have targeted those applicants, they must have, you know, those business that have ten employees or less. That means, so what about one person? Do we grant that to them? I mean, even this is a one-person company?
Well, under the proposed guidelines, a one-person business would not be eligible.
Would not be eligible, right? So we have done twice for the, for the grant. And do you have a statistic that shows those people who receive the grants and are they still continuing the business in our city? Or how many of them receive the grant, then they close the business? Do you have a number?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but personally, having worked in the, our files, I know of one that received last year's grant that is out of business. But I don't, I don't know the current statistics.
So how many grant receiver from first and second round? How many total?
The last run was fifty-eight. I'll have to double-check my records on the first round. But I can certainly get back to you.
How about the first one? Oh, you don't have the first one here. So, so far, you, you noticed that maybe just one business?
Yes, and that's from my personal day-to-day work at the city, but I'm sure there could be more. Yes, and that's from my personal day-to-day work at the city, but I'm sure there could be more. Hopefully not, but I know of one.
Okay, thank you.
I believe council member Wu, please don't quote me on the exact number, but I believe we did about 74 businesses that first time. We had around $170,000 and it was that same 24, I'm sorry, $2,500 per business.
Maybe you don't have the number, but I'm just curious. I mean, for 74 for the first round and second round, we have 58. So do we have like the tax amount? Or, I mean, how much those business that collect the grants, that they had contributed the tax in the past two years? I think that is, that could be...
I can look into that, but I don't have that on me this evening.
That we can just, you know, we know that how the funds can leverage, you know, and helping the business. That pretty much I need to know. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Manjoka.
Thank you. Well, I do support this, both grants, the general business grant and the reallocation assistance grant as is. Even though I know tonight we're declaring that the emergency mandate is over, but as I said before, the impact continues. COVID impact continues. Just because we end the emergency mandate doesn't mean people are still struggling, that they're still trying to regain their footing and survive with their business. So I think this is, this is something that's needed. I think the fourth round, I would probably question, but I think it's a good investment. And regarding the sales tax, I just wanted to clarify, because it was actually one of my questions. I know for retail, I believe, is it our finance department that checks to see the sales tax data? I think they either, we have a company that we work with that kind of does an audit. And then we have the franchise tax board. Is that how we get our sales tax data?
That's correct. Both of those, through both of those sources.
Okay, so I can understand how that is a data point for our retail businesses. But what about our other businesses? We mentioned medical, dental, there's no taxes there. They're offices. So what kind of, what are we looking at for those businesses? Because it seems like we're focused on the retail, but there's nothing to verify whether these offices are viable businesses. Or I remember there was one business, we were going to go some ceremony of sorts and our city clerk was able to discover from social media information that made us think twice about supporting a business like that. I mean, is there anything we're doing, actually for both, whether it's retail or office? Are we going to do any kind of due diligence to make sure it's something we want to be supportive of?
Unfortunately, and I would ask the city attorney to jump on my comments if I say something out of order, but we can't get into the business of deciding who's a good business and who's a bad business. In that case, we were just, in the example that you gave, we just recommended that council not go to that particular business for the grant opening, but we certainly didn't stop them from getting a business license or being part of our business community. So along those same lines, if we had a business owner that didn't represent the values of our community and they applied and they met all of the other requirements, we would give them that grant and would not get into that.
Okay, so then, okay, so I understand that. So for offices, so retail, we look at sales tax. What do we do for office? Is there anything that we're looking at? Because it's, I mean, we have the list of qualifications and it says business must be current on reporting its sales tax data, but that excludes offices. So what else can we do there?
For those, we just look at the number of employees. We have not had a minimum amount of, let's say payroll or any of that kind of information. We've just gone on the number of employees. For a doctor, it might be difficult because of, you know, the way that they incorporate their businesses. Some doctors are part of larger practices or they're a sole practitioner as part of larger practices. So I don't anticipate we would have too many of those. But the other kinds of service businesses would also be, would be eligible, absolutely.
Okay, okay. And then I wanted to also just remind, well, staff, that when the agenda went out, there's that summary version and then there's the detail, the staff report. And I know it was still on the, I think, believe it was still online and then the council got the version where it stated that the relocation, I'll just read it, says eligible uses of funds for relocation assistance are to reimburse businesses that moved locations within San Gabriel or from another city of San Gabriel. So I wanted to make sure it's understood that the latter, from another city, does not apply. They have to either been in San Gabriel or moved to another location in San Gabriel.
Yes, I would like to clarify that point and apologize for that error. But the version, the staff report information is correct and the summary of the agenda is incorrect in that only businesses within San Gabriel already are eligible for the relocation grant.
Okay, I just think it's important to let the public know because I think the public probably reads mostly the summary and then some of us or some of the public likes to get into the report. Well, I think staff is looking for direction or actually a vote tonight, right? Because we've already discussed this before. So I'm just going to say that I, you know, I would recommend, and then we, I know we still have to hear from our mayor, but I would recommend the 175,000 total for amount of program, which is number one. Other options, and then at, I guess, and then 2,500 would be for each of the grants and then the, for the general business assistance and then 10,000 overall for the relocation. It's not a great, it's not a motion, but it's pretty much, it's in here. It's, let's see, it says 95,000, grant amount 2,500, which means 38 applications and eight for the 10,000. So anyway, if we do make a motion or someone needs me to make a motion, I'll make it more eloquently, but that's it.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Manjoka. And for this CDBG fund, the assistant this time around the second, actually, we only can call this the second round because first round, we already fixed their application. Because I go to the community, they allowed to, like pandemic, they, maybe they closed their business when we go outside. So me and the former mayor Liao together. At that time, I know that they already closed. They don't know how to apply it. And recently, even like just last year, I think before, even before last year, some people say, hey, I don't know this business assistant around it. So even last year, we discussed, that time I have the recommendation, say, should be open for everybody to apply again. But we put on the steel, continue the council decision. Okay, I respect it, okay? But still use the older application back to 2020. So I think it's because that this CDBG fund, because they don't know that, we should be fair to, for the, open for the new application for the, all the people they know. So that's very important, like, well, how do you reach out to let the more business owner can understand it to apply that? That's first of all. The second one, I remember, first one, we included just the owner too. Not this time, say not include owner. Because I, for the, for the small business like a pop mom, they need assistant too. If they can survive, I know that even right now, some small business still not feel can survive too because the high inflation rate, okay, high cost or the, all the, all the, like material costs, everything, it's really for them, it's a struggling too. I'm business owner, know that too. So I think if council agree, though, I should be include a mom, a pop shop to, for them, okay? That's my original, if we think about it, to assist in the CDBG for the small business. Because our city have a lot of this kind of small business in our city. And then for the sales tax only, I know that it looks like a sales tax is very important for our city revenue. But you also think about it like a business owner or they have an employee there. They spend money, most should be, when they're working time, it's spend money in our retail restaurant. They spend money too. They also generally, where do they get the money? The restaurant, because they go to restaurant, they pay the sales tax. And I know if even business owner, they pay rent, it's included. You know, sometimes the triple net, the council member, no, the triple net should be, they share the cost for the property tax, right, and insurance too. So I think it should be open for everybody. It's fair. Because you don't, you cannot say the, just like, okay, because the sales tax, they generally really support it generally for the city. But we, I, we have to see where they came from, the sales has from, they spend money too, you know? So that's, that's, okay, I really want to like, this time, we also happy to have the relocated for the, for the, for the city, okay? It's, it's, it's really help, I know, it's allows some business, some, even we're not talking about some specific location, but different location, they also have, sometimes because the, you know, also economic things happen, they maybe landlord or tenant, so they have, but one things I just want to point out, it's especially if we relocate it, if the same building, they relocated, the next door, the office business, is it belong to the relocation too? Or have the different addresses?
That would be up to the council if you wanted to allow that. Our thinking, my thinking would be it would be allowed because even though you're only moving next door, you're still moving all of your equipment. You're still changing the addresses on all of your stationery, all your outreach. If it's a restaurant or some other used, it requires a special permit, we treat that in our permitting process as a brand-new address. So they have to go through any health department permits all over again. So as long as it's a different physical suite within the same building, then we would treat that as a new location unless the council wanted to do otherwise.
Okay, thank you, Mark. So...
Mr. Mayor, can I make a couple of comments now? And thank you, guys. I've been listening to the comments and I've been thinking about it a little more. You know, then, like, like we said later this evening, we're going to consider the shut, the ending of the shutdown and the pandemic rules. I'm thinking that because we're getting back to business as usual and plus we've been through a couple, well, before I got on, we've been through a couple of rounds of the, these stimulus payments before. And in light of the fact that this money is going to be coming from the general fund, I'm thinking that this money might be better spent on the whole community and not only certain businesses. So, you know, businesses, yeah, I feel bad for businesses that are struggling right now. But because this money is coming from general fund, I'm thinking that I would rather see it being spent on all the residents and not just a few businesses that, you know, will make the cut in terms of these, these applications. So anyway, that's kind of my thoughts.
So Caroline, did you have any, at least, our council member Chan, regarding the whole community, do you have any idea to assist in the whole community?
Well, I think that that's would be...
Reality, reality, I just want to ask clean plan, you know, how to execute it.
We have the next agenda item.
Okay.
That helps the whole community. Maving helps the whole community. There's a lot of things that help the whole community.
Okay. Councilmember Wu.
Well, I think that if we finish discussion, are we going to...
So if you think of finish discussion, so for my proposal, I should be include a business owner. Yeah, I make a motion.
You know, second.
Yeah, make sure, just only, only little change, it's include a business owner, rest of the...
The owner be included in the employee count?
Yeah.
May I clarify that? Because I think I'm, I'm reading what our regulations are differently than the way they are met. And I'll just, whoever makes the motion and then votes on it is, if this is your understanding. What we meant, though, by not including the owner, meaning that they could have 10 employees and the owner, not meaning that there were 11, the owner wouldn't be counted as an employee.
Okay, okay.
So a one-person...
On a payroll, should be okay. That's great.
So I think if that's what the understanding of the council would like, we can...
So don't need to change it, right?
And so then the motion would be just to approve the staff recommendation with that clarification because the recommendation is to adopt the resolution and the resolution has the guidelines and the dollar amounts in that. So simply, the staff recommendation would be enough.
So don't, no, no, yeah, don't need to, don't need to change it, right, the motion, right? Okay. So, okay. So, so, yeah. Yeah, so the motion made by Mayor Ding and the second by council member Wu.
And just to be clear, thank you, Mayor and council members. The motion, if approved and passed, would institute the programs as were proposed by staff. So there was a lot of discussion about different ways of doing things, but council is now going to vote to basically approve the program as was presented by staff. That's, that's how we understand the motion.
So only since, like for previous have they received a CDBG fund?
Is that part of your motion, Mayor, to reduce the amount of relocation grant? So then it would be appropriate to amend your motion?
Amendment of motion, yeah.
Okay, and ask the second if they would be happy to amend that.
Okay, so the motion, it's add on, like if they receive the CDBG fund before, we just subtract the 10,000 to the 2,500, then move to the small business assistant too, okay? So I make a motion and...
As you can.
Second, okay, so, so, so motion. So the condition is already, no, I, I don't need to repeat it, right? Okay, and the motion made by the Mayor Ding and the second by council member Wu. Then please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of 3-2 with council member or vice mayor Harrington and council member Chan voting against the motion.
Next item, please.
Discussion regarding an ordinance to allow local prosecution of certain misdemeanors. Assistant city attorney Kazanowicz will make the presentation.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. As you know, the city attorney Keith Lemieux and Alex Lemieux have been working on this with staff for a period of time. I'm glad and honored to present it for discussion. First of all, this item is not a, is not before you for a decision. We're not looking for you to adopt the ordinance, but to review it, ask any questions you may have, provide any directions, direction to staff with regard to the proposed draft. And once we have that in hand, we will return to you with an ordinance that would be before you for first reading and for the process of approval, moving it forward. The proposed ordinance would assist city staff and the city. The proposed ordinance would assist city staff and the city in dealing with an issue that has arisen in the past years, and that is an increase in crime. There has been several reasons for the, for the increase, but one of the more prominent reasons was the directive that has been issued by the District Attorney's Office, Special Directive 27, which basically has resulted in numerous misdemeanor crimes not being prosecuted, even though they originally were filed and then basically have not been moved forward into prosecution. The Directive 20-7 states the misdemeanor charges specified shall be declined or dismissed before arraignment and without condition unless exceptions or factors considerations exist. This is LA Countywide, and obviously that approach to numerous crimes, trespassing, disturbing the peace, driving without a license, driving on a suspended license, criminal threats, illegal drug and alcohol possession under influence of drugs or alcohol, loitering, loitering for purpose of prostitution, resisting arrest, and there's a whole series of, of these misdemeanor crimes that are simply not being prosecuted, absent specific exceptions or some factors. Just as a refresher, obviously somebody arrested for that crime or charged with that crime, the police department would file a report and then file the packet for prosecution to the District Attorney's Office. And then the District Attorney's Office makes a decision on how to move forward with that packet. And unfortunately, in the past few years, the crimes that I've listed among others have not been moved forward to, to be prosecuted due to the Directive 20-7. Additionally, obviously, the criminal community, I'll say that for lack of a better word, is aware of this and, and which emboldens and makes the issue even of greater significance, because if, if these folks that are going to commit these crimes know that there is a very, very high probability of not being prosecuted for them, obviously the, the threat of punishment or any kind of consequences disappears and it results in greater increases. And, and the, the declination in, in filing has been growing from the DA's office from seven and a half percent up to 29% in, in the most recent years. So 30% of, almost 30% of the charges have not been, have been declined to be filed. Our city has experienced an increase in crime, including arson, which as we know occurred at the mission, and, and throughout the city, the, our police department has been struggling with, with these increases. Cities do have a legal authority to prosecute crimes that are declared misdemeanors under municipal code. In order to be able to prosecute those crimes, which are also misdemeanors under state law, permission or consent from the District Attorney's Office is necessary. That consent has not been provided, has not been issued by the LA District Attorney's Office. The law does provide that in certain circumstances, under certain specific local issues, the city can prosecute identifiable misdemeanors in order to provide a response to issues that are of local significance. Example being the arson at the mission and, and events of that type of situations. We do have a city that is filled with a lot of historical buildings with the mission, with theater, and, and there are local circumstances which would, we believe, allow us to identify certain prosecutable crimes, put them into the municipal code, and allow the city attorney's office to be the prosecuting arm for those violations. The process would be basically the same, the police department would arrest or charge the, somebody who is suspected of committing that crime or has committed that crime. And that packet rather being, than being turned over to the District Attorney's Office would be turned over to the city attorney's office. And then the city attorney's office would, would initiate prosecute, prosecution in criminal court in the jurisdiction. We, we have a fairly voluminous staff report, which I'm sure you've, you've identified and had a chance to review. We've, we've been communicated with the police department, and the police department has identified several specific crimes which we believe can be connected to our special local circumstances, and those are the crimes that are proposed today in the draft as being identified as misdemeanors if the ordinance is passed ultimately by the council, which would be prosecuted by the city attorney's office. These include aggressive panhandling, trespassing and loitering, unlawful camping, amplify sound, and vandalism. The, what I probably omitted to mention is that the reason there is a necessity for, for making local circumstances is that misdemeanors that are declared misdemeanors under state law cannot be prosecuted directly by our agency, by city attorney's office, because, or charged by, by the city attorney's office, because they are preempted on the state law. Trump's basically local law when it comes to these type of general crimes. Again, the ones that we've identified with, with the assistance of the police department, we believe we can set the circumstances that exist in the city, which would provide us the, the unique opportunity to, unique circumstances under which we could legally prosecute those without the concern of, of preemption. The proposed ordinance, draft of which you have on your staff report, outlines all the necessary findings, defines what those crimes are, what, what is involved, and also the, the penalties for those crimes. I will answer any questions that you may have, and look forward to, to your direction with regard to how you want to proceed on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Does any council member have a factual question for staff to clarify? Council member Manchaka.
Thank you. Okay, Martin. So the last time we had this discussion, there was some, you know, we were kind of throwing ideas out, and there was one idea of maybe creating our own department, but then I think we decided to just give it to our, our city attorney. So what we're doing in essence is, these are misdemeanors that are not being handled by the DA, but would be handled by our city attorney. So you kind of become our district attorney. I mean, that's in essence what's, what's happening here.
That is basically the, the end result, yes. We, we would be the prosecuting arm for any violations of the municipal code that are misdemeanors, and we would be appearing on behalf of the people, as they say, in, in criminal court prosecuting.
So we don't have to create a new department? You're in.
Oh, right. And, and, and we do have, our firm has numerous attorneys that specialize in code and criminal prosecution, which would be dealing with these issues.
So are you doing this for other cities too?
We represent, I think somewhere around 60 cities.
For these type of crimes?
But, 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 I, so I, I do not know whether this has, is being done by the firm specifically on the misdemeanor, criminal misdemeanor prosecution. I know that the firm prosecutes code enforcement and code violations, which are misdemeanors in, in a lot of cities, for, for various, for many, many clients. So we, we do appear in criminal court on a regular basis.
But you're not, not necessarily representing cities for this type of?
Well, representing cities in something very similar, if not the same.
Okay. And then we keep saying misdemeanors, and that's a, a really large net, but these that you listed, the, you know, the five that you listed, they're, they're also called nuisance crimes, right? I mean, is that another way? Because misdemeanor seems like, there's so much there, but the ones you list, it's, you were very specific. I mean, there are misdemeanors that we cannot prosecute. These are the only ones we can, and I believe they're all called nuisance crimes, or?
Well, yes, for, they can be all described as nuisance crimes. Trespass is probably less of a nuisance crime than loud noises, or also camping may, may or may not be necessarily a nuisance crime. But misdemeanor is, criminal, criminal offenses are divided into three sections. There, there are infractions, which are like traffic tickets, minor, minor offenses. Misdemeanors, which are the next step up, which are punishable up to one year in, in jail, and a fine of up to $1,000 per violation. And then obviously felonies, which, which are much more severe in consequences and severe in damage. But, so misdemeanors are right in the middle, and vast majority of criminal prosecution on, on this level revolves around misdemeanors.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Yeah, just one, if we're just still doing clarifying questions, I see that Fiscal Impact says between 200,000 to 400,000, looking at budgets of other cities. I was trying to determine, is that for a full program where you're prosecuting all misdemeanors, including the ones the district attorney has allowed other cities to prosecute, where we're not getting that, or just these ones we're listing? Like would it cost, what would it cost us to prosecute these types of?
I believe it's a full program, but I'll, I'll let the city manager respond to that.
That's exactly that. That's the estimate if we were to take over all of the misdemeanor prosecution, which we're not able to do. So it would be something less than that. I was asked last week on what we would put in next year's budget, because if this were adopted by council, it would take two readings and then 30 days, so by the time it was even able to be prosecuted, it would be next year. So a placeholder I would put would be about $150,000 in the budget, and then two things would happen. If we were more than that, then we would come back to council and get an increase in that budget area, or we would just prosecute less crimes if that were something that was a budgetary issue.
Because in that case, they're pretty much supplemental to what the district attorney is prosecuting. We would prosecute as much as we can within our budget, and then we'd kind of just have to kind of stop prosecuting as much?
I, I think that, again, the decision would be left up to council as to, you know, how, how much money you, you wish to spend, depending on how the program is going. But I, I suspect that if these are not prosecuted by the city, they will not be prosecuted by the district attorney's office. That, that is one of the reasons why we're before you.
One other thing to point out, that City Attorney did a great job of the presentation, but I want to point out for the council and the community, I know the council knows this, but I do want to reiterate for the community, just because the district attorney's office is not prosecuting these misdemeanor crimes, we continue to arrest people for these crimes, and we file the paperwork, and we don't assume that it's not going to be prosecuted. We leave that in the hands of the district attorney.
Council member Wu?
Well, thank you, and thank you, City Attorney. I think this is a great report that takes me a few days to read it. I'm, I'm not a legal background, so I, it really takes me a long time to, to, to get to know about little things of the legal part. But I think that you just mentioned about, also it is stated on your, the staff report, page seven, there are five areas that is from section 130.18 to 130.22, that have been considered and suggested for local misdemeanor enforcement. So I, I know that most of the time we are debating about if our city, we can develop an ordinance that will be overriding the state's law or the county's, you know, the DA restrictions, then they put like something we call the Special Directive 20-07. So I want to reaffirm that, are those five items that you listed and suggested for the local misdemeanor enforcement, are they appropriate levels of discretion to, to be afforded to our city? And I, I, I don't know if this is a proposed, the proposed ordinance that meets the criteria for the legal authority of the cities to prosecute our own misdemeanors.
The ordinance as drafted and, and that's before you identifies and makes findings that are particular to the city of San Gabriel, and, and that is the requirement that would allow the city to prosecute certain misdemeanors. We do have certain situations here that I mentioned, and that is a lot of historical buildings, we have a history of arson here, so there is, there are certain circumstances under which a local government can prosecute what otherwise would be a, a state law violation if the proper findings and proper circumstances are, are identified. And these five areas were identified by the police department as being troubling in the city, and, and they are not being dealt with by the district attorney's office when filed. So in order to prevent or discourage the recurrence, and because of our special circumstances, we were proposing that the city prosecute these. We are not overriding the state law, we're not overriding the district attorney's directive, we're simply carving out a local, specific circumstances and situation which under law, as we read it, allows us to identify these crimes and prosecute them through the municipal code.
So that means that those five items are fully enforceable? We are able to prosecute?
Yes, we believe so.
Awesome. And on, on your analysis part, that shows the misdemeanors such as like trespassing, disturbing the peace, driving without license or suspended license, you know, criminal threats and illegal, illegal drugs or alcohol use, those kind of things are like a summary dismissed unless arresting agency can convince the filing deputy DA otherwise. Charges for those offenses are not being filed even, even through probable cause to the arrest exist. So that means if our police officer arrests someone, then if they are not able to convince the DA, then they will be released, no matter what.
In these circum, in these list of, of crimes that you, that you've read from our staff report, through our experience, because we continue to file them, obviously the police department continues to enforce the law, they arrest or, or charge, file charges against individuals who commit them, or are suspected of committing them. But in, in our experience, these crimes have not been prosecuted by the district attorney's office, they're specifically excluded, absent special circumstances, and those special circumstances are hardly ever able to be, to be enumerated.
Wow, okay. And there is one thing I, it brought my attention, it's about a criminal threat, it's not part of our ordinance or suggested ordinance. So let's say if someone threatens to harm another person, and the threat caused the victim to fear like their safety is an issue. So, you know, with the Special Directive 20-07 today, the offender probably won't face charges, right?
Based on our past experience, that is, that is accurate.
So even they are repeating their, their threatening behavior, we still just can arrest them, but it won't be prosecuted?
Well, we, our police department. Our police department will do what needs to be done. They will arrest, file charges against an individual who's suspected of doing what you've described. And then it'll be left up to the DA's office whether or not to prosecute that. Most of those crimes that we've listed, they're driving without a license, reckless drives, all that. Unfortunately, there is no circumstances under which we can frame a special exemption or a special circumstance here in our city in order to be comfortably be telling you that we would not be prosecuting something that is preempted under state law. So those crimes are left to the district attorney's office to prosecute, absent a consent from that office for a city to prosecute them. And our problem is not unique to San Gabriel. This problem is not unique to San Gabriel. Our surrounding communities are suffering from the same issue. It's LA County-wide right now.
So that means, I mean, any misdemeanors not covered by the five that you proposed ordinance? So that will still be the decision to prosecute, such as those cases, will be up to our DA office, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So let's say, I'm sorry, is that too long? But I do have another question. So let's say someone has been arrested by our police for misdemeanors, like trespassing or criminal threats. The difference between today and with an adopted ordinance is that the person who has been arrested will be facing different legal consequences that will be preventing them from doing something again.
That is correct. The difference is that when we receive the filing packet from the police department, we will go to court and file a complaint against that person and prosecute it. That is not happening currently through the district attorney's office.
I see. So I think Vice Mayor Harrington just mentioned about the four, like, you know, I believe that this is a people are concerned about the financial impact. But this is, it's about the cost, you know, the budget for the city that prosecute misdemeanor crimes that locally costs between like 200 to 400 annually. So according to your conclusion in the report, the cost is, actually, that is more like a case-by-case payment, only when used. Can I say that?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
That means if, for example, if no one is prosecuted throughout the year. So we actually?
There will be no cost.
Zero, no cost.
Correct, yeah. We would, the cost would only be incurred if prosecution took place. And as the city manager identified, the 200 to 400,000 dollar estimate that was being discussed, was discussed for a full, as if we were receiving a consent from the district attorney's office to prosecute all misdemeanors that occur in our city. Those that are only state law and those that are, could be locally prosecuted under special findings. That is not going to happen because we don't have a consent from the district attorney's office to do so. So that budget will be less than what is depicted in the staff report. And I think I heard the city manager say that if the council moves forward with this, $150,000 will be allocated in the budget for the prosecution. And we'll see how it goes.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Wu. Okay.
We still have clarifying questions, or?
Still the clarify question?
No, I don't have any. Thank you.
Okay. So, I don't know, this is a clarify question. It's just wanted to know, because this list, on the page two, listed all the trespassing or driving without license. That's current DA, not the, if we prosecute, we catch them and prosecute, but the DA is not prosecute to them, right? That's my understanding, right?
That's correct.
Okay. But for, but is there any, like, for the last two years? So how many of these kinds of cases we have?
Total misdemeanors were about, and Chief Nakamura, if you, if I say anything wrong, please correct me. But we're averaging about 600, between 600 and 675 arrests for the last four years. COVID years have been less.
Okay.
But for the full years, we've been averaging right around 600.
600?
Mm-hmm. Not, I'm sorry, Mayor, not just for these cases, for all misdemeanors.
All misdemeanors?
Not just for those.
Okay. But I don't have any calculate for this one, okay? That's fine.
These are the ones that are covered under the Special Directive.
Okay, the 600 is how many the DA didn't prosecute them?
Approximately.
Or they continue to prosecute?
I'm sorry to cut you off. Approximately 29%.
29%?
Almost a third.
Okay. One officer, okay. All right, okay. And if like we currently have the create at our, like, five category, when it's called trespassing. Now, over there, the DA also had trespassing. So that's meaning if we prosecute them trespassing, DA don't, normally processing is if you don't, DA don't do that, so then we city prosecute them, right? From my understanding, we just give to them first, right? Let them charge it for, I mean, that's what would be cost for the DA, not for our city, right? Yeah. That's how I want to financially want to understand it.
I think it's going to depend on the crime that we charge them with and the circumstances. If it's part of a bigger crime, we would give that to the district attorney. But I believe if we know it's going to be declined, and this is what we're arresting them for, the local code, then our city attorney's office would prosecute that locally.
Okay, all right. So actually, if we create our misdemeanor, the code, then first of all, we still go to the DA first, let them, to prosecute them. Then if they don't prosecute them, the city step in too.
There could be situations where they commit crimes that are both a city crime and a crime that the state requires the district attorney to prosecute. So there could be instances where we turn the case file over to the district attorney, and then if it gets declined, we could follow up with our crime prosecuted under our local ordinance. But I would ask Chief Nakamura to give his thoughts on this. But my thought is that we're going to be arresting folks for these crimes and trying to catch them on these crimes before they commit bigger crimes.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. This is Ricky Nakamura, interim police chief. And I believe City Manager Lazaretto, your question was, are we going to just prosecute on these crimes alone? Is that the question, from my understanding?
That's part of the question. The other question is, is are we going to be prosecuting on these crimes, but first giving them to the district attorney? And then if it's declined, going through our own process?
Actually, it would probably, correct me if I'm wrong, councillor, it might probably be considered double jeopardy if they declined the prosecutorial package, and then we hand it over to the city attorney's office and try to go at it a second run. So once it's declined, I believe we're not going to be able to move forward. So in that case, our recommendation would be to just go directly to the city attorney's office and file with them directly on that specific crime. And we're speaking of the misdemeanor.
And if I may add, Mayor, I think only in the circumstances where these would be lesser included offenses. If there's something else that the perpetrator was being charged with that was covered by state law, and I think the city manager identified that situation, we would then file that packet with the DA's office. If the crime that is being charged is covered by our ordinance, my recommendation would be that we, that is sent directly to us. We will prosecute it under ours municipal code.
Can I clarify that? Because I have a different understanding of double jeopardy. Legally, if we're charging a crime that's different but lesser included, if the first crime is not prosecuted, means they didn't face jeopardy, correct? They didn't go in front of a judge. There was never a time where they faced jeopardy. So we could still prosecute our crime, even if there's a declination. I want to make sure we understand that or not.
That is my understanding of, and I will readily admit that I'm not a criminal law expert. I practice in the civil arena and the municipal law. But my understanding is that the double jeopardy engages upon being charged and prosecution initiated. In other words, when the charges are filed against you, if they're dismissed or not filed for some reason.
Yeah, so a declination is not filing charges at all. There's, that's where, if the prosecutor had filed charges and then removed them, then the double jeopardy goes, then they would suffer double jeopardy. But if they're declining charges in the first place, they never faced any jeopardy. They were only arrested.
You're right in that respect, yes. Whether procedurally that packet can be then turned over to a different agency for prosecution, I would have to double check on that. I don't want to tell you that, yes, I'm sure that that would be fine. That's something we would have to check.
The only reason I ask that is because in that case, we can just charge knowing that what the district attorney is, let's just say the double jeopardy is something we're worried about. We don't even charge the, we don't arrest for the other stuff. We only start arresting for what San Gabriel can prosecute in those cases.
Well, I think that I would leave it up to the police department. And I think, obviously, if the more serious crimes were committed, and we have a suspect that we believe has committed them, we have probable cause to file charges against them, even though lesser included offenses were something that the municipal code would cover, I would think that the prudent course of action would be to file it with the district attorney's office and hope that the serious charges, more serious charges, are in fact prosecuted.
Yeah, I think my point is that we have a new tool in our toolbox, and that's what I'm looking for.
So when we prosecute them, we first initiate, it's our police, your chief decision, or it's the city attorney's decision? Go to the DA or go to the city? That's my, also bring up the, clarify the question too.
I think it will be a joint decision. But I think the discretion lies with the police department. And they will file it with the agency that they feel is appropriate. If there's a question as to that, we will be ready to discuss it and help them with that decision.
And another question regarding the financially for our cost. So for the city attorney, do you have any idea, average per case, it's how much will be charged?
The answer is no. The, what I will tell you is that having prosecuted municipal code violations in the past, and I have done that, it's been a while. But there is an efficiency in number. So you generally speaking, don't go to court with a single file. If the number of offenses is as described, and we are having an issue with these perpetrators committing these crimes, it is likely that two days a week, somebody from our office will go to court for arraignment, which is what the first step of criminally charging somebody, with five, six, seven, eight files to, you know, initiate the process of criminal prosecution. Most of these cases resolve in a plea. In other words, you don't end up in front of a jury in trial. Very often on misdemeanor cases, it's a rarity. So the costs would be controlled and would be limited. Once every while, you may run into a situation where you have to do a trial in front of a jury, and that may take a few days to do that, and a lot of prep, a lot of witnesses, a lot of work with staff, which would be more costly. But generally speaking, arraigning these folks and plea, taking a plea is usually not a great timely, time-consuming task, especially when you're dealing with several files a day.
And Mayor, putting numbers to that. Everything that Martin rolled out is how we arrived at the 400 to 600,000 dollar number. Before Chief Harris left, he and Keith talked through cases and talked through with cities that are already prosecuting these. And as Martin said, you might have cases that are just an hour of attorney's time, and you might have some that are several days. But the average would be about $500 per case, on average. But with a lot of them being quite a bit less than that.
You know why? Because based on the statistics, so one officer, they just charge it. One, two officer, they didn't charge. So if come back, how many cases we can charge them? That's I want to calculate, what's the financial impact for the city? So how many cases you probably can prosecute? Based on if 200,000 budget. If we use the five, $500 per case, so how much? 400 cases annually, okay?
But remember that that's all of the misdemeanor arrests in the city, not just for these five crimes. So it should be less than that.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, yeah, okay, that's my clarify the question. Then Chief City, do we have any public comments?
We do, Mayor. The first one was submitted by email. This is from Dr. Chastity Jennings Nunez, and reads as follows. To the city council members, each time that this item has been raised, the staff report contains statements presented as fact that have no evidence of validity and feed into a false narrative of public safety that emphasizes inequitable, biased policing, and punishment over intervention, prevention, accountability, and rehabilitation. The misdemeanors that you have identified for prosecution are intended to criminalize being homeless, will disproportionately target minorities, youth, the undocumented and under-resourced families. The most problematic feature of this proposed ordinance change is that there isn't a shred of evidence that enacting it will result in a decrease in larger and more violent crimes. You did not provide an example of any city in Los Angeles County that has enacted this type of local prosecution, and then performed an analysis to confirm it indeed led to a decrease in violent crime. If you truly want to prevent trespassing and unlawful camping, then invest in providing an overnight shelter opportunity in San Gabriel. If you want to provide a lawful alternative to public defecation and urination, and we all do, then develop hygiene centers around the city that are available to unhoused persons. Based on the definition of aggressive panhandling, the Girl Scout troop I encountered outside of Smart and Final could receive a citation. It is deeply concerning that based on the direction indicated at the joint meeting, planning and city council meeting on March 2nd, and the repeated insistence on pursuing this extremely costly, poorly developed scheme, that despite the desires of residents, the city council is not interested in preventing homelessness, finding shelter for those who are unhoused, or utilizing the windfall of money that clearly must be available to address the problems in our city in a humane and equitable manner. These solutions are possible, but require courage and vision to enact them. And then we have several speakers. The first is Andrew.
Good evening, city council, management. Tonight, the city council is discussing prosecution of misdemeanor crimes at a cost of up to $400,000. The United States Department of Justice lists the first step to prevent crime is for law enforcement to foster trust in the community. And from our previous former chief, and now our current interim chief, they are working at that, and I believe they are. Second is to invest in the community-based prevention. That's where the money should be spent. I would like to remind everyone that February of 2018, the city council, in a purely political move, voted three to two to rescind the memorandum of understanding with the Department of Homeland Security that would have afforded the city resources from the federal government to help fight crime in our city. And just a few months that it was in place, two people were arrested for posing as immigration attorneys for a fraudulent legal service. They were also investigating counterfeit. They were also investigating counterfeit driver's license, passport operation. And they were looking for the owners of 30 Chinese passports discovered, which are more likely connected to some type of human trafficking. Benjamin Franklin once said, "Those who give up essential liberty to purchase a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." Since I got a little bit of time. What I didn't see in the staff report, I think is important, is that you talk about the 30% of these crimes that are not, that are declined to be prosecuted. Was there any research done on the 70 that were? Because the other side of this coin is now you have not only the district attorney, now you have the judge. Because if you notice what's going on in this country and in this county, this state, many of the judges are very lenient. So, if we're going to spend $1,000 and I'll just throw that number out to try to prosecute someone for loitering or something and then the judge says, "Okay, slap on the hand, don't do it again." What did we get with $4,000? Nothing. We have that criminal now on the street again or however you wanted, this person who committed this misdemeanor back on the street with no penalty. So, that's where the real issue is. We need to investigate to see where those 70% of those misdemeanors that were prosecuted, what was the penalty that came out of those? Because if it was just a slap on the wrist or if it was just, you know, oh, he was in the Alhambra jail, which, where we take our arrests now, you know, overnight, okay, time served. What have we gained from it? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Patricia Bojio.
Thank you very much. And it's Patricia Fulton. You mispronounced it. That's okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and also members of the public here. I am, initially I was saying, I am very opposed to this. I listened to the staff report and I listened, of course, to our council and our other public speaker and the online speaker. I really feel that the public should be made aware of this. What does this entail? What does this, what are the consequences of this? And as the last speaker said, what are the consequences for the people that do these things? Are they just a slap on the wrist and go back out on the street? I know right across the street from me, I had a violent, not just, not to my house, but my neighbor's house, a violent assault on their property along with violent graffiti. And the police were very responsive and they, I don't know whether they ever caught the people, but if they did, I hope they threw the book at them. That was in my memory. But I really think that we must let the public know and we must really address these concerns. And also, where's that money coming from? Is that part of our property taxes that we are being charged for? You know, these are all questions I haven't heard an answer to. As I said, just based upon what I hear, I just really think that instead of going forward with these, we have to provide the public the correct answers and we have to make the public notified about these. Thank you very much. Thank you for taking your time to hear me. Thank you.
Speaker is Erlinda Romo.
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor and city council members. I'm also opposed to this special prosecutor for many reasons. The top three are, first of all, I don't think the city has the funds to really do a good job with this program. And to do it halfway isn't going to cut it. You either go all the way or you don't do it. Number one. Number two, I don't feel there is a strong, a horrible crime problem in San Gabriel. I even looked online at different resources and city data has a wealth of information. And I looked at stats from 2003 to 2020. San Gabriel has less than the national average, less than our neighboring cities, with the exception of San Marino and Temple City. So, our crime rate is lower than the national average and our neighboring cities. Third, what's going on, these types of things affect the homeless. The homeless is not, it's a very complex problem. And a big part of that is mental health. So, what are we doing for mental health? That's huge. Putting someone in prison who has issues isn't going to be able to solve the issue. You're already punishing a person who has internal demons, external demons. A lot of the drug issues that we have is not by choice, but because of mental health. These are the types of things that make a huge difference. And how are we going to treat people who need help? Are we going to put them in prison? Are we going to spend several hundred, $1,000 to get someone who has a mental health problem to put them in prison? I don't think that's fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the comments.
Okay. It's now time for council discussion. Who would like to start it? Vice Mayor Harington.
Mine's going to be a bit, so I don't know if anyone wants to go before me or not, but I have about 10 minutes or so of items I'd like to discuss.
All right, okay. 10 minutes, okay.
Roughly, I can keep it shorter. I can keep it shorter or I can go longer. I just want to say that, you know, it's been a year since we've been talking about this, more. And I would say that, first off, all crimes are statistics until they happen to you. And people always forget that. We hear crimes high, crimes low. If there were no crimes in San Gabriel at all and then all of a sudden the crime happened to me, that's the only statistic I care about. So, when I think of this, I think about what is our job as council? One of the first jobs we have is to provide the safest environment we can to the residents, to the businesses, to just the visitors and everybody that comes to our city. And I think any police officer will tell you this. Criminals know where the best places to commit crimes are. The best cities, the best areas and even the best areas inside of a city. There's specific areas where they know they can get away with more crimes. So, if we're able to create a bigger bubble around San Gabriel and criminals know not to commit their crimes here, I see that as a good thing. And I think going back to everybody on this dais when they were a candidate for council, I don't know anybody that said they're not running on safety and protecting residents. Because that, if you didn't say that, you're not getting elected. I can just tell you that. And what people think safety is, that's a nebulous idea. And so, we get into, if you're not paying close enough attention to things, and this goes for everybody in every area and you can't pay attention to everything all the time. But people that have been, I'll say like myself, that have been serving for enough time, we've seen what happened under AB 109, Prop 47 and the effects, the devastating effects it's had. And the unseen effect is the fact that statistics don't really matter anymore because we're no longer considering things that used to be felonies, felonies. We're no longer considering things that used to be misdemeanors, misdemeanors. So, to say we've had a drop in crime or a raise in crime, it doesn't really matter because a lot less are being reported that are actual crimes or whatever you want to call it. And so, I don't give a whole lot of credence to statistics, whether they go up, down. What I care about is can, holistically, what's our approach as a city? And I mean it holistically. I want crime prevention. I want crime diversion. I want rehabilitation. So, what I see here is a small tool. I would like to see us to have some diversion built into our program. Like, if someone gets caught doing graffiti, I don't want to just see them go do jail time. I want to see them cleaning up graffiti. And that's something we can work on a judge with as the prosecutor. We can say, hey, no fine, no, your diversion is the people that watched you do this graffiti are going to watch you clean up this graffiti. And then, if you do it again, we're going to come after you again. And hopefully, eventually you learn your lesson not to keep doing that crime here. And I'm not so big on the quote unquote homelessness crimes either. I don't think that's the solution. I really do think we, I liked some of the public comments. We can't criminalize homelessness. We need to solve that, not through prosecution. That's where the diversion, that's where the providing housing, you know, that's where I think the city can help in that as well. But without the threat of prosecution, there is no diversion. There is, they have, we can't take somebody off the streets against their will for having a mental illness. We can take somebody off the streets against their will for urinating in public. So, maybe that's the avenue we use or maybe to get them help, not to prosecute, but to divert them because otherwise they can just tell our cops literally, "I'm going to do whatever I want." If they have no threat of prosecution and there's no threat of any way, say, hey, wait a minute. We're going to at least say, hey, if you don't want to, if you want to keep doing this in our community, we're going to keep you from doing this and we're going to get you help, whether you think you need it or not. It's not normal to have to have these things offered to you and you don't take them. And we do, no matter what anyone wants to say, there are societal norms. And people with mental illnesses, if they're not able to identify those societal norms, they need some help and we need to provide that help. And that help is not prosecution. That help is not putting someone in jail. That help is sometimes forcing them to take the help. So, I think in general, another thing that everyone, and once again, I'm going to avoid statistics. Everyone can agree that without threat of consequences, behaviors keep happening. And those behaviors become worse as there's no consequences applied. And so, what we're really doing is we're setting up people that may get engaged in the system and they're committing small crimes, small crimes, small crimes. Most felons and people that commit felonies or violent crimes or hate crimes or however you want to say it, don't start off with, that's their original crime. Someone doesn't say, "I've been good up till now, I'm 27, I'm going to rob a bank." It's not normal criminal behavior. They started out doing graffiti, they started out hanging out drinking on the corner, they started out smoking a joint with their friends in the park. And then it gets worse. "Oh, I need some more money, I'm going to go break into this car." So, it does escalate. So, I really believe we as a society, as a community, as a council, need to look at what are we doing to help this situation? And I don't want to see our criminal justice system as strictly punitive. I want to see it as, hey, you know, we recognize that you're doing these actions and we really think we can help you do something constructive instead of destructive. That's the mental approach that I bring to this. I'm not bringing, gee, we really need to prosecute people because we're so much better than other people. Everybody, and it goes a bit in my faith, but everybody is a sinner. Everybody has that in them. Now, but for the grace of God, there go I. So, I've been blessed in what the community and my family and other people have supported me. I think we as a council and as a city can offer that to other people that may not have it in their own circle right now. So, that's the state that I approach this with. I don't want to be punitive. I want to have the holistic, all of the above approach. How can we have the carrot and the stick and hopefully the carrot works and more carrot than stick? Unfortunately, we have a derelict district attorney right now. And I'll just use that word. He is dereliction of duties. So, we have to fill whatever holes we can fill as a city. And I think the threat of prosecution is the best way to get a diversion. The best way to help people is to let them know there is a consequence. And without this, it's just going to be like every other city and, you know, San Gabriel will be a nice place to commit petty crimes, and I say petty with quotes. I want to say to the crowd that says not prosecuting crimes works because there's a great article you can read. It's called "The Deadly Consequences of Not Prosecuting Misdemeanors." The subtitle or subline, "Why Data and Science," in quotes, "Don't Say What the Rogue Prosecutors Claim." I would advise anybody to read that. Whether you agree with it or not, it's a great commentary on how is this data being manipulated by prosecutors that are running on these soft on crime or, you know, if we don't prosecute, it actually leads to better results. That also has never been proven. In fact, it's been disproven. But people get to say whatever they want to say. And I'm not going to go into the numbers or the statistics. The type of numbers I do want to go into are how much does a crime cost? How much does it cost the individual? How much does it cost the community? How much does it cost our city council? And we don't think of, and I think I brought this up at the last joint meeting, we don't think of the unseen consequences. We always think of the seen. We have a homeless person on the street. We have a person, another person going into and shoplifting. We have someone committing burglary. We have someone breaking your car window, stealing your catalytic converter, whatever it is. So, we think of the tangible things and we're not thinking of the intangible things. And the government accountability office has a great chart in this, if you ever want to look it up. So, like, I'll give examples of tangible. We expend things, we might buy a security system for our home. We might buy cameras for our home. That's a cost of crime. We have our police force. That's a cost of crime. If we had no crime, we'd have no need for our police force. Businesses spend a lot of time and money on crime prevention. Our insurance costs go up because of crime. Those are direct things that we can anticipate, that are a cost of anticipation of crime. Then there's the direct consequences of crime. Lost wages. You have to go, you miss a day because, you missed your first few hours of work because someone broke into your car and you have to make a police report. You have to do whatever. And then you're at work and you're not productive because you're thinking about that. There's also your family and how they're traumatized by that. Those are direct consequences. You have direct property loss. That money that you would have spent on something else that would have helped the economy is now a destructive cost rather than a constructive cost. If anybody knows Frederick Bastiat from the 1850s, go look at the Broken Window Theory. Great for political theory and economic theory. Destructive cost is not a good thing for our economy. No matter what any type of economist wants to tell you, destructive costs are not good. Crime is a destructive cost. And then there's the response to the crime. There's the police time for investigations and paperwork and all that. We have to keep courts. Our whole justice system is a cost of crime. We actually defend criminals in this country, which we don't do in other countries. We pay, we pay for the defense to criminals. There's, so I'm going to stop on the seen cost right there, but then we also have things that we, a lot of us don't always think about, like the intangibles, like the avoidance of certain areas, the avoidance of certain behaviors because of the fear of crime. Then there's the pain and suffering and the mental anguish that comes after a crime. What's the cost? What's the value of us of not having been a victim of a crime? It's almost unknowable until you've been a victim. Because then that's all you're thinking about for at least the near future after that crime. What we can't know is which crimes we prevented. So, we could do this and there's, we all see the cost. $150,000 is the estimate, could be a little more, could be a little less, but we don't know. Did we, did we in this program stop a person from becoming a felon? One murder costs the society $3 million is the estimate. One murder. Let's just say we prevented one murder because of this program, because someone didn't tag something and something didn't get, didn't start a gang fight. That's $3 million we've saved this community. We don't think about that because I can't put that on the budget. I can't put that on a balance sheet because I don't know that that crime didn't occur because there's no way to prove it. But we may have put someone on the right path that was doing graffiti or smoking in the park or drinking on the corner. And this may be the thing that prevents that. So, yeah, I understand the, don't prosecute the homeless. It's a great argument and I agree with it. I don't think we should be out there, you know, twisting our mustache and saying, let's get those homeless. That's not what this is about. And I would, I think the council wouldn't let our police force go that way. I just don't foresee that. That's not what this council is about. So, I think those are some really, like, some things that we have to take into, when I say all of the above approach. when I say all of the above approach, we, it applies to the reasoning behind this as well. And also if we do take that approach and we, let's say we keep people out of jail and we do a lot of diversion and we can actually turn some of that cost of crime into a benefit such as, oh boy, now we have people helping clean our parks that would otherwise be doing something negative. I think those are things we can look at. And we just, we just decided to award all these businesses this money, say to relocate or stay in our city. If our crime keeps going up, what incentive do they have to stay in our city if they can go find a safer city? How about this, we make our safe, our city a lot safer and less likely to have crime happen, then we don't even have to pay people to come here, they'll just come here. And our, and our rents go up, our business rents can go up because people say, hey, I have less costs to divert crime or to prevent crime. Look at the Bay Area where they just closed 18 CVSs in the past year within a very small area. Go visit San Francisco, the city proper, and try to find yourself, uh, to go get a prescription now without CVSs, not easy to do. So that's a very big disservice that this, this type of thinking did to that community. And when we talk about equity and effects on different groups in our community, think about where those CVSs were located, what alternative services they have to get a prescription or even over the counter medication. They're gone, they're just not in the community anymore. And it's not getting filled back because if anyone else opens up something, it's going to suffer the same consequence. And this is all because of lack of prosecution. It's not because all of a sudden, for the last million years, there was no criminal inclination in humans and then we just decided all as a mass psychosis to become criminals. No, it's, it's leniency. It really is. No, no worry of consequences whatsoever. And so if San Gabriel has consequences, at least we could stand out and some other cities around us that don't do this might say, hey, why is San Gabriel have this perception that there's more, it's safer there? And we'll say, because it's not a perception. It's something that we took proactive action on. And we did what little bit is left over for us that we can do because this district attorney doesn't do his job. But we can do this. He's, he's lacking in 30% of his job, but we can fill in maybe 5% and maybe it's just enough safer so that for our residents and for our businesses and for our visitors that it's San Gabriel becomes a better place. And if it's $150,000 to figure that out, I'm willing to invest that. And I do see that as an investment because one shoplifting crime costs us more than one prosecution. And it may not be that, that, that 20, 40, 100 or up to $900 before it's prosecuted that, that is the effect, but it's the fact that that person took something and now they're, even if we don't get prosecuted, if they don't get prosecuted, we arrest them and then the city takes the time where they're not out shoplifting again. I have about five or six other things, but I think people get the idea of where I'm going with this and I hope the public understands the idea behind this is not just punishment. In fact, that's not the main idea. It really is provide a safe place for everyone involved and give our safety, uh, men and women, our professionals, one more tool to work with. And I really think, me personally, with my family here, my kids here, I've had businesses here, I have friends with businesses here, I think that's my obligation as a council member to do the most that I can. And I really think it's a good investment and a good use of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harrington. You've been more than 10 minutes.
I promise not to go 10 minutes.
Okay.
I cut it in half.
Just kidding.
Vice Mayor.
The council member, yeah.
Vice Mayor Harrington made some very good points and I agree. Let me just add a couple of small things that I come from, I come to this from a slightly different viewpoint or additional viewpoint that I think most of you may know, I've mentioned it in public before, that in the last two years, my own home has gotten victimized. I've been, been victim of crime three different times at my home this past couple of years. And I'll tell you something, until it happens to you, it, you don't really understand it a lot of times. And it's, there's a certain feeling of unease when you become the victim of crime. And so that's the first thing, but, and unfortunately, in my case, they never caught the criminals. But if they had, I think that knowing that the prosecutors would not prosecute the offenders is adding insult to injury and it's revictimizing the victim of crime. Because you know, you already feel bad that this thing happened to you through no fault of your own. But then when they catch the perpetrators and, and then you have the government tell you, well, uh, we're, yeah, we have them here, but we're not going to do anything to them, not even going to try them, bring them to trial, we'll just kind of let them go. That's terrible. And, and I don't want that for anyone else. And as Vice Mayor Harrington mentioned, that unfortunately, because the district attorney of the county isn't doing his job, then our only alternative is to try to allow our city and city attorney to fill some of those gaps, even though it won't be fully filling, but you know, to the extent that's possible for us. Yeah, that, I mean, that's the basic gist of what I, what I had and let's see. Oh, yeah, the, what, also what Vice Mayor Harrington was talking about, the, the kind of unseen costs of crime. So in my case, people came onto my property and tried to steal my catalytic converter a few different times. Now, one time they couldn't actually steal it, but it still did damage to my car. So I mean, that's not, I mean, my family still had to pay to get the damage repaired. And that's not just magic money. That was a good thousand, $2,000 to do the repair. And so just because a criminal couldn't complete the crime doesn't mean that there was zero cost and there, there was, there was no damage. So, yeah, so that's kind of from my personal experience, unfortunately. But anyway, I'll yield my time, but I, I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Minchaka.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so, um, yeah, I'm looking at this as a program and I, I wanted to ask the chief to please step up. I had a couple of questions for you because currently there are quite a few programs that our police department has. One that comes to mind is the MET program, uh, which is mental education.
Mental evaluation team.
Thank you, mental evaluation team. And you know, my understanding is, you know, we've gone to every single homeless person that we have, to every single person in need that has some type of mental health assistance. But the reality is that we can give them all the resources, but they can reject them. Is that correct?
Absolutely, yeah. We've made many outreach efforts over the years, especially with Measure H funding becoming available. We threw a lot of resources in trying to identify the homeless population and trying to give them resources. But again, then again, we can't force people, we can't remove people from properties or force them to a housing project or any type of other resource. And that is unfortunate fact of the homeless population is it has to be done by compliance.
And even just mental health in general. And I know one of the other programs that our police have is, well, first of all, you're physically present at the school district. And then you have, each officer has adopted a different school. And so you've, you've worked with the students, try to identify students that are showing some challenges and trying to get them ahead of time and hopefully guide them and again, provide the resources. But you need permission from the parents, but, but you, as a police department, there are just so many ways you're out there to, to provide, well, safety obviously is number one, but, but just prevention. And it's just a whole different way of policing now. Is that correct? Is there anything I'm missing here?
Absolutely.
I'm simplifying it, but yeah.
I absolutely agree with you 100% Councilwoman Minchaka. Like the vice mayor spoke, these intangible costs of throwing resources or investing into our community engagement bureau, and my hopes is to, you know, make it a lot more robust in the future with more personnel, more resources, is that investment, the initial investment and having those investments pay off by making those proactive type of contacts in our community solves a lot of the issues that come, may come down the pipe that we never will know that would, would have festered into a crime. And that's the success for all of us in the community that we can't put a number to.
And so I'm looking at this the same way. It's, it's an investment, it's a program, one of many. But this is not the, the be all, do all. It's just, it's just another program. And as council, I believe we have the responsibility to find, you know, everything's on the table. Try to find different ways, but you know, arrest is not the only way. And, and what these, with the prosecution, the little we are able to do, you know, we could have diversion programs, you know, I, I'm sure you have your community bureau or maybe it's another division. I mean, you work with that already, correct? It wouldn't be like the first time you've ever come out with a diversion program.
And that's correct. And I think Vice Mayor and Councilwoman Minchaka, you kind of stole our thunder because we're going to be coming to the council in the near future with a diversion program specifically aimed at the youth. So specifically talking about adults, yes, we do have some diversion programs available. But like the vice mayor says, it's, this program, this ordinance program is, we look at it as much more like a extra tool on our belt. Like police officers, we carry a lot of tools on our belt. And this is an extra tool that we get to use if needed. And contrary to popular belief, the police department, we don't arrest everybody for misdemeanor crimes or even felony crimes. We have a lot of leeway when it comes to these type of crimes. Now, there's specific federal and state crimes that we are mandated to arrest, but for misdemeanor crimes, we have a lot of latitude. And many times we do not arrest. But for the time that we do need to arrest, because we need to hold that person accountable because they're a recidivist offender or they're causing a hellacious problem in our community that we have no other means or avenues to deal with that problem, then the ordinance will come into fruition where we can work with their city attorney's office to solve that problem. Now, whether it's going to be a punitive side or a diversion side, we don't know, but that's where we get to work with the city attorney's office and make that determination before it gets declined by the district attorney's office.
Yes, I look at this as accountability because there is none. You know, hopefully it's just a temporary fix and the DA we have right now will be out by next year, so there is another election, but maybe not. But I'm looking at this as a temporary fix and hoping that we resume to prosecutions when they should be made. I mean, there has definitely been a, a, a deep drop in arrests and an increase in crime. I mean, in every city, every city, every council member will tell you that. So you know, I do believe his lack of, because his lack of, of taking, getting a handle of this, or, or lack of just ignoring is, we're paying a price on it. But I wanted to ask you, you know, if we did have a program like this, do you think it would have an impact at all?
That's kind of hard to say because it's going to take a little time to kind of see and analyze a trend of it. Some of it's going to be intangible and some of it are going to be tangible statistics that we spoke of earlier.
But we'll be able to learn from it because without something like this, you know, that's the other way I'm looking at this program, is that we're going to get something out of this by, by actually initiating and executing these prosecutions. I think we're going to have some good data that's relevant for our city. And if it is a temporary fix, then even if we do have a DA who, who's willing to do his job, we'll learn from this. We'll, we'll have a better idea of, you know, the type of crime that we have in our city and, and maybe develop another program as part of the community bureau.
Absolutely, I 100% agree with you on that because hypothetically, even if the district attorney wasn't reelected in 2024, uh, his directives are going to have residual effects for years on, even with the new district attorney on board. Because the criminals are still going to be out in the streets and continuing to do what they do. And everybody understands there's no boundaries. They don't understand boundaries, they just commit the crime, whether it's an opportunity crime or pre-planned. So we as a police department are going to be responsible to making sure that we still continue regardless of who the district attorney is. But my, our, our hopes as a police department and as a, as a community is hopefully there is a correlation that we are able to control some of these type of crimes.
And I think some, having something like this will give us the ability to have some real data as opposed to, you know, national, state or federal kind of data. Be much more relevant. And then, uh, do you think such an ordinance could avoid some crime here in San Gabriel? And the reason I'm asking this because I've been told time after time that, you know, people talk, criminals talk, and, and they do avoid certain communities. I'm not sure about the ordinance in particular, but they do avoid certain communities that seem to be a little tougher on certain situations. What do you think is this, is this going to do? I mean, does the word really get out or is that just a folklore?
That's a double edged sword because when I speak about criminals, we have what's called transient criminals, it's not the homeless transients, it's people that just hop from city to city. Councilmember Chan, you spoke about catalytic converter thefts. Those are the type of folks that would just, they don't know where San Gabriel is versus San Marino or Hamburg, they just commit the, the, the crime when there's an opportunity. So to get the word out to those type of folks, I don't know if there's going to be an impact. But however, for anybody that's local in the San Gabriel Valley community, I believe whoever's committing recidivist type of crimes in the San Gabriel Valley are going to definitely learn to stay out of San Gabriel because they're going to know that, they're going to be held accountable, whether it's going to be on a punitive side or a diversion. There has to be some kind of accountability and people are going to say, well, I'd rather not deal with that and go somewhere else.
Okay. And even if it's, you know, a handful, we're still providing our residents that level of, of comfort. Cause I think there's a lot of hopelessness out there frankly, that, you know, what's the point? Nothing's going to happen. And I think this could at least provide some level of comfort, some kind of level of security that, you know, I, I know, I call them nuisance crimes, but these are the type of crimes that really affect people's businesses, affect people's just feeling safe in their own homes or, or apartments or condos, whatever, on their residential areas. And so I, I think these are, even though there's only five of them, I, I think it could have a, a, a real impact at so many different levels.
Right. Some people call it nuisance crimes, some people call it equality of life problems. I kind of err on the equality of life side of these issues. And you made a great point because what really bothers me a lot about the last couple of years is talking to some of the community members is some of them told me that they don't even bother calling us when they.
I know, I've heard that too.
And that really bothers me because even though the prosecutorial side may not work for them, at least the police department, we want to at least do something to make them feel at ease and we're, we're trying our best. Maybe there's another route that we could deal with that person that committed this crime against that specific member of the community.
Well, that's the hopelessness I was, I'm sharing with you that it's just like kind of throw their hands up, no, why even call the police? It's not even about police anymore, it's just that they just know in the current environment, legal environment, you know, there isn't the protections anymore. So I'm hoping this could be an opportunity for them to feel safer or for our community to feel safer. I wanted to also regarding the cost, you know, the $150,000, I wanted to make sure with the city manager that, that was my, my only thing I would want to know is that you've answered it, but I'm just going to just rephrase my question here. I just want to make sure that if we're looking at $150,000, that there will be an evaluation process, you know, we'll reevaluate it. If we find that it's $150,000 per month, then we need to abort. But if we find that's $150,000 for the year, you know, that's something I'm comfortable with because again, I'm looking at this as a program where we can get real data. You know, can you just help me out? Do you think it's going to be $150,000 for the year? I think you said yes, but just, just repeat that please.
The short answer is yes. I think it'll be $150,000 to $200,000 a year. We'll put in the budget, a $150,000 number over and above our special legal services that we get from the attorney's office. And I'm confident with that because we can control the number of cases that we prosecute. So if it were $150,000 a month, we would. So if it were $150,000 a month, we would do one of two things. Come back to council and say we have a bigger problem than we thought, and we need to do a different approach, or we need to get more money.
Yeah, and I think that evaluation process is healthy for both the police and for our city attorney, and then for us as council to get an understanding. You know, I am a big proponent with the fact that people are not going to change without some level of consequence, especially, I mean, with regards to crime and the consequences, you know. I think, you know, the example of painting the graffiti, I mean, it's a consequence. I think it's a very civil consequence. I mean, it's better than going to jail or some other situations. But I really believe that there needs to be consequences, and there isn't any right now. And if we can help somebody, and if we, well, if we can help the offender in some way, and if we can help our community by improving the quality of life, I think the investment of $150,000, frankly, even $200,000, I think is, that is our job, is to provide that level of safety. So I am comfortable with the program as it stands, and I'm confident that our police and city attorney will work through this and do what's best and carry on their fiduciary duties. So that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chaka. Councilmember Wu?
Yes, Mayor, before I start my 40-minute speech, can I ask for a short break? Because I, yeah.
Okay, okay, wait. Have the healthy break, 10 minutes, okay? And come back at 9:15, okay? Meeting reassessed at 9:15. So, Councilmember Wu, that's your turn.
Well, thank you, Mayor Dean, for the break. So I'll just keep, you know, 40 minutes a little bit longer. It's a big relief, but thank you so much. Yes, regarding this issue, first of all, I would say I think this program, the ordinance, is insufficient to patch the hole that generated by Special Directive 20-07. But I truly understand that everyone in our community, they may have different feeling about this because I would love to share that what I have seen and I have experienced since I have lived in this city for 22 years. I believe that most of the council member, they support that the public safety is always the priority because without the safety, no one is coming here to live here, to invest here, study here, play here. And actually, we were talking about affordable housing, but also, we should consider the high crime rate is not affordable to us. We shouldn't really have that keep increasing. I don't really know that how this ordinance will improve, but we, at least there's one thing that we can, you know, do a little more than what we have seen from the DA office in our area county now. I know many business owners on some of BC's street, like Valley Boulevard, Las Tunas. I got many calls, you know, almost every month. Councilmember Wu, my window got broken again. Last night, someone broke my window. So they're not even asked for insurance to cover, and they just spend like a couple hundred, even thousand dollars just get the new glass installed, and next couple of weeks, and they got broken again. So that's why I'm very grateful that at least we have passed the business assistant grants because the dollars that will help them at least maybe to repair like doors or windows maybe twice. Maybe they can clean the gravity, you know, a couple more times. That is a little bit of support to them. But they do ask me what happened to my shopping centers here that we always got the people breaking the cars and took the purse away. And one time, I was in a restaurant, and I saw RPD was writing a report for one of the driver. And I walked there, and I said, what's going on here? He said, well, my purse got taken away and all my keys from the bank, which is the victim. She was the manager, the branch manager in one of the bank in Acadia. So that time, I feel really embarrassed because as a council member, then when I saw those victims, they are so helpless. They said, where is my keys? Where is my purse? Where's my credit cards, ID? And no one can really do anything except writing a report for her. And of course, I have seen the senior being robbed on the street. You know, they, so we always tell the elders, people, don't take too much cash on you. Don't, you know, don't wear any like the gold rings, take that down. But this is not a healthy way to tell our residents in the seat of San Gabriel, telling them that we are a safe city, but please don't do anything that will make you become a victim. And I think people, they may have a question about, oh, if this ordinance is going to affect or maybe make a big impact to those homeless people. But, you know, from my understanding, I do care about the homeless issues in our community. And I'm so grateful because I spoke to our chief, and also I know that we have the community service, that we have officer outreach to those people that maybe we call homeless and see if they need any help and provide drink, water, anything, or mental health assistance. And that is like at least twice a week, if I remember correctly. So that is a part that we are trying to make the ordinance from the city, the local level, is more like giving our resident more peace of mind, saying, yes, we have a little tool here. It may not improve something that we all expected, no crime at all, but at least we can start from a little. And especially, this is the cost that we are seeing. There is a lot of invisible costs, of course. But it really, in fact, when we see the newspaper that is broadcasting that there's again another robbery happens in seat of San Gabriel. I have seen those San Gabriel names on the newsletter three times a month. That is already, you know, that is really a bad reputation that showing to our community. And of course, I spoke to our city manager, Mark. I said, well, sometimes it's in county area, but they still say it's in San Gabriel. We have so bad luck because we are San Gabriel Valley. So everyone just happened in our neighbor city is San Gabriel Valley. I mean, but to us, we are only like 4.1 square mile city. And the purpose for this, to me, is not to punish anyone, but to prevent and telling those people who break the windows, you know, try to take, you know, damage the people's properties, the residents' property, that they will have more legal consequences if they, you know, damaged or jeopardized the people's property. So I would say this is no harm that we adopt this because it's also a promise. And it probably is the maximum things that we can do from our city, from our local level. But it's better than nothing. So that's So that's my, that's my point. And I, I hope that our community that can express how they feel. And we will make sure that the law enforcement is practicing professionally. And you know, everything is, everyone deserve a safe, you know, public safety is, they deserve the safe community to live in and to enjoy. That's, that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Wu. Just have the seven minutes. You have more time. Okay, all right. Yeah, okay, the rest of forty minutes, I, I will be speech. Okay, okay. So yeah, it's, it's really, it's thanks to the staff and the city attorney and bring the, this kind of report for us to have give to our some information. And this how to prevent our, the, the criminal in our city and keep our city the safety. And also, I really like all the public comments. Especially, I know they really concern it is this ordinance will be effective like homeless people. I, I think initially from the staff and the city attorney, I don't think they will focus on the homeless people. Right? It's really wanna focus on the, the criminal, the victim. So we want, actually, we wanna do that. It's because our DA, it's not really help out the criminal, the victim. So we wanna help the victim in our city to don't, don't have these kind of things happen again. So like council member Wu, it's already time, we are living in the same community. It, it's true, in Chinese press, the community, it's, yeah, it's even, almost every week, you can saw this kind of news. Some is really in our St. Gabriel city, some, some is St. Gabriel Valley or St. Gabriel, the, the, the corporate, you know, it's a county belonging. But people think about it, it's because the St. Gabriel, because we are famous city, you know. So as it's, at least we, we needed, because our DA the situation, so we need to do something. I think the previous we discussed, I say, I also support it. If our city do something, at least some voice let the DA to understand it. What's the local community concern about the, the safety issue? Maybe I think these, even these five category not really help to, to really help to stop some, some the criminal. But at least to do something, right? Okay, I, I just wanna ask him further like the bring trespass, bring the windows, which one category they belong to? What are these five?
Mayor, you're speaking about vandalism to like a business.
Okay.
If it's nine hundred fifty dollars or less, that's considered misdemeanor.
Okay.
A lot of times they will not file, they declined to file that vandalism. If it's nine hundred fifty dollars or above, then it becomes a felony. But a lot of times it does get dropped down to, because it's a wobbler, it gets dropped down to a misdemeanor. And they could decline to file that as well.
Oh vandalism, okay. But right now, I know there, it's a repair window, if a side window is like a couple hundred dollars, plus they have a purse. I think most should be, it's already exist the, the nine hundred fifty dollars.
Yeah, from my recognition, I think a good business size pane window is probably about two thousand dollars in damage.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, for the business size, yeah, that's true, yeah. But I mean, the car windows, the, the, they, they broken.
Yeah, those are significantly cheaper, but usually they're in conjunction with another crime, like they stole something out of a vehicle, which is a felony.
Okay, all right. So it's, 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 it's too many. So for the, for the break window, it's not just one place. Yeah, I think our, our, our business areas, every time it's, I listen to, oh, this plaza, that plaza have something happen. I, I know the, our chief will be go outside too. And plus, I have the story, because they go to the bank, they go to the restaurant to eat. And the criminal, they get inside the, the restaurant, take their, their, their purse out, run away. That's, that's more strange, more scared. The people will be say, oh, I, they feel if we broken window, because you don't there, right? But they just in front of you to do that and then they, they driving the leave. So that's, that's really bad for our, it's also in the, in the community, they, they talking about this story too. That's like maybe two or three weeks ago, okay? So I hope so we can do something. But just one more, add on one more question. So is after these things happen, DA don't prosecute it? So any city have the same situation, they do the, some own city the prosecution? Do you have any data other?
Are you asking about the, any of these cities are, are doing their own prosecutions?
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, councillor, but I believe Redondo Beach is doing their own prosecution. And we're kind of modeling off of how they're doing the prosecution. I believe we got the numbers from Redondo Beach as well.
Okay, so Redondo Beach, how long they already do that?
More than ten years.
Oh, okay.
So there's been no cities since our current district attorney has been elected that have been able to start their own programs. They were all from prior city attorney, uh, district attorneys.
City of San Diego also has a very robust prosecutorial division. And they prosecute all misdemeanors in the city.
If a city of St. Gabriel do that, that's meaning after the DA do like not prosecute, then we are like almost first city to do the same situation, right? Okay, so, so we don't know the, what's the result? My question is that we don't know, we don't have data to, to improve. But community voice, I think I, I really agree. So to, we at least do something to prevent this kind of criminal happen in our city. So looks like that we have the budget on that. I hope, I think most our city council support. But I, if, if we also can, community also consider about this, the, the financial impact. First of all, I really happy we city have, have the mental, the help. Like I think we have the like, with the China Service Center, CAC, they provide like use the iPad to, to online to consultant. Yeah, that since we, we need the consideration too, so continue to, to help the mental health issue, the, the, yeah, yeah, to help them. If we help them, also reduce the criminal too, right? But if people some really do like wanna do this some criminal things, so we really need to do something to help. But we can put on like some, if the staff can still can continue to review. Oh, by the way, another question, if they, for the this, this five, they, we prosecute, we have any like a consequence for them? We already think about it, we, we're writing, they go to the jail or just go to the, yeah? How do you, what's the, they, they, they?
Very good question, Mayor. Thank you. The ordinance provides for prosecutorial discretion. They can be charged either as an infraction or as a misdemeanor. A misdemeanor, maximum penalty for a misdemeanor is one year in jail or one thousand dollar fine per violation. Jail times for misdemeanors are unheard of. So, so there, there are financial consequences for, for those who commit and, and are charged and prosecuted. It's penalties can increase as there's repeat offenders. But basically, that's, it's, it's, it's a financial punishment if we go to the punishment phase. But again, I think the focus is gonna be to, to try to deal with this issues through diversion, through other ways of trying to steer these folks away from, from committing these crimes.
Okay, so I think we, the consequence, it's, I, if, if misdemeanor, we still, I agree also, consider about the give to them if they have the mental health. We try, we need to help them in the mental health, right? And, and some really need the education, we may, we, we need, should be provide this kind of education to them. Hopefully, they don't happen again, right? So that's the, I think we, if they got a, we prosecute them. And this, I, for me, the suggestion, so if we, if we, after, we still not done yet, right? After we research and come back, we adopt this, the resolution. So can we like put on like, maybe we can try just one year, see what's the result? Then we can review it, see for the future, right? So or two year, whatever, so see what's the, the, the time range. It's, 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 you can do the analysis, you know, yeah.
Yeah, I believe we could probably extrapolate some good data within about six months to a year's time, so.
Okay, so year, one year is, is should be okay, right? Okay, yeah, we can review it, then see public also. We just at least do something, see what's the result, right? We spend this money, it's, it's really help our community. And you, you also can provide the status of the data. It's before that, what's the criminal rate and after then, what's the criminal rate? So it's help the community to understand. We, we definitely, we don't wanna waste our tax dollar money, right? So we really wanna help our community to, to have the safety environment for us. Okay, so yeah, I, I also, yeah, it's a support of that, okay?
So Mayor, we're not looking for any vote tonight. I think I have unanimous direction. So we will be bringing back the ordinance as it's drafted. And you'll have a consideration. And just a reminder that we'll have two readings of the ordinance and then it will become effective thirty days afterwards. So we would be about two months out from this becoming effective. And then we would include the budget as part of next year's budget and probably start using this tool in July if it is approved by council.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mark. Okay, next item, please.
Resolution number twenty-three dash thirteen proclaiming the termination of a local emergency. City manager Lazaretta will make the presentation.
Now I get my forty minutes. I think Vice Mayor Harrington and council member Chan did most of my presentation. The state has removed its emergency order as of February the twenty-eighth. And the county will be removing their emergency order as of the end of March. And so it is time for us to adopt a resolution that will end or terminate our local emergency. So you have an or, a resolution in front of you tonight that would do that. The only thing I do wanna point out is that there is one city code that we're, we have relaxed that won't be affected by this, and that's the outdoor dining ordinance. We still have, I think, two businesses that are taking advantage of that. And we'll have a separate discussion in April on outdoor dining and then we'll enforce following that. But everything else will be going back to as it was prior from a law standpoint or a, a city code standpoint. But as we all know, COVID is still an issue. So people should still take care of themselves, still get vaccinated if they choose to do so and still follow best practices if they're sick. With that, the staff recommendation is to adopt resolution twenty-three dash thirteen, which would end our local emergency.
Does any council member have a factual question for staff to clarify the report?
I was gonna move it if there's no questions.
Okay, okay. Chief City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
I mean, the public doesn't object.
No comments, Mayor.
No comments, okay. So now it's time for the council discussion. You want any discussion?
I'm in favor. That's all my comment.
Okay, all right, so.
How long do we get?
We'll make a motion.
I'll move to approve the recommendation.
Okay, okay. Council member Minchaka made a motion and the second by Vice Mayor Harrington.
Motion passes by vote of five zero.
Okay, next item.
Thank you, Mayor. We have no additional public comment.
And city manager report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you, Mark. And the council comments and the conference meeting report?
I'll start.
Okay, all right.
I'll speak quick. I only have one thing. Let's see, on the twenty-fourth, I attended our monthly St. Gabriel Chamber breakfast meeting at the Elks Club. The speaker was Southern California Edison. They, they came to talk about their small business resources. And, and they, they tried to, they're promoting their cooking with electric. But I don't really know about that yet. We'll, we'll see if we have some, some of our resident restaurant, Chinese restaurant owners to see if they trust the system. And so anyway, that's, that's all I have. Thank you. Yield my time.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harrington, okay, okay, okay. And council member Minchaka.
Yes, okay. I wanted to share with the council and the public that St. Gabriel Nursery was featured in the LA Times last week and they are celebrating one hundred years. Toyo Miyataki Studio was founded also in nineteen twenty-three, but they started in Little Tokyo and they're now here. But they will be also celebrating one hundred years of being in business. And so I have asked the, about the city manager, you know, Anne Aldo, our Economic Development Manager, what do we do when we have these type of milestones? And I was looking at some of the other organ, I'm sorry, some of the businesses like Petrillo's, who's also featured in the, in one of the newspapers, they're celebrating seventy years. We got Claro's Deli who's celebrating seventy-five years. And Kwanzaa's, which is not a business but an organization, were approaching a hundred years in three years. And so I was gonna ask the city manager if he can share with my colleagues how he responded with the one hundred years first. And then I wanted to do a follow-up on, on this, but if you can share, please.
I'd be happy to, Councilwoman Minchaka. So it's kind of serendipitous that the two businesses that are celebrating a hundred years are also Asian-American owned businesses. And so we will be presenting those as part of our AAPI Heritage Month celebration in May, I believe it is. We are reaching out to both of those businesses. They happen to be private families and have not always wanted the recognition. But if they will allow us to do it, we would love to have them here at the meeting. And especially, well, both of them, but especially Mr. Miyataki Studio having some pictures. I've seen some incredible scenes from the Olympics in nineteen twenty, nineteen twenty, whatever it was in LA in the early nineteen hundreds. And also unfortunately, some of the other pictures from the internment camps and other very moving moments throughout LA's history and the Asian-American community, especially Japanese-Americans. So with all of that, we will be presenting those two businesses if they'll allow it. And then my suggestion would be that we have our Historic Preservation and Cultural Resources Commission come up with a suggestion for how we deal with businesses and what appropriate milestones would be. I don't think twenty-five years, for example, is appropriate because we have, you know, hundreds of businesses that are twenty-five years old. But perhaps, you know, longer milestones would be something that we could support. And even twenty-five years, we can do a, you know, a certificate and notice them in our online media, that kind of thing. But as far as doing stuff before the community and the council would be those bigger ones. So that would be my suggestion.
I thought it was my suggestion, but that's okay. You could take credit for it. So then I, after learning about these businesses, I did approach the chairperson of the Historical Commission, Saint Anne Luberich, who was here earlier. And I've asked her, you know, we, we've had two issues now. One was with the, the ordinance regarding name changing. And then now with these businesses, you know, what, what is appropriate? You know, what, what should we do? you know, what, what is appropriate, you know, what, what should we do, what are best practices? And so I came to find, and, and I forgot, and Vice Mayor and I, we were here when that happened, but when we put together the Historical Commission, we put in their bylaws that they only meet once every three months, which really isn't enough time for all the work they can and want to get accomplished. And I know as I was speaking with the chairperson, she, you know, she really would like us to consider changing it so they can meet once a month or, you know, as needed, kind of like the planning commission, they don't always meet every month. But I wanted to see if there is an appetite for, for us to reconsider the Historical Commission, allow them to meet more often. And that's something I guess we could bring, especially during the budget, because there will be some extra time. But if there's no need, then they just wouldn't meet. But I know there is a strong interest from our Historical Commission to meet more often. And I think, you know, with these businesses approaching these milestones, you know, it would be great to get their expertise, but also with, with the names of the streets, you know, kind of define what is legacy or what is, you know, how many years is a business considered, you know, a legacy of sorts? So if everyone's in agreement and the city manager's in agreement, you know, hopefully we can have that brought back, we can discuss further. Great. And then, let's see, I gotta check my, my hair. So La Casa, I wanted to mention that they are having a open house for their preschool on Thursday, March thirtieth at five thirty. And La Casa is another organization, they've been around for like seventy-eight years and they provide a very safe learning environment for children. So I encourage those who have preschool kids or have friends who have preschool to please really look at La Casa. It's a great organization and I do serve on the board, so I am a little biased. And then they also have food drives and I was able to, last Friday, witness the food drives that they have there. And, you know, there is definitely a great need in our community. They are not the only ones who have food drives, our Saint Gabriel Mission Church has one, AYC has one, and all three groups, including La Casa, will tell you that it's never enough. But, you know, they are looking for food items, so if people wanna donate, you can go on their website, you can call them and find out what kind of food items they are in need of. You can also do monetary donations so they can cover the shortfalls when they don't get enough food donations. They do work with other partners in getting food, like the local food bank, but again, it's just never enough out there. And then lastly, the Ramona Museum of California History, which is right here in, right next to Luna's, between Luna's and Pulciano's Deli, they have announced that they're gonna have their annual high school public speaking contest. It's open to all Saint Gabriel Valley High School's students from both public and private schools. The application deadline is March twenty-third, but first prize gets five hundred dollars, second is three hundred and fifty, third is two hundred, and the two runner-ups receive a hundred dollars. And again, you can go onto their website, but the topic has to be related to California history. So it's anything you want, five to seven minutes in length and I am proud to say that I'm one of the judges. So for those who have high school students who want a little bit of extra cash, it's a great opportunity. And that was all. Thank you.
Council member Wu, okay.
No, I don't have any report.
Actually, I, I think last two weeks, I have a chance to go to the, because last month's, it's Black History Month, so I have a chance to visit to our, the Blossom Market in second floor, they have the exhibition. It's, it's really good to learning the black history, so it's really appreciate. And also, it's really like the Blossom Market within, within, when we decide let them have to second floor, have this art exhibition. And then I have a chance to go to the Heritage Stories, the Black, in the county, the office in a, in a, it's Black History Month, it's really like give to, in the county, the people who are working the county, it's how the black history to help our, the county, its employee and they, she also recognize them. It's really help to know the culture, you know? And another one, it's regarding our city also, I, I city or not, just like Chinese food, Asia food, we, we really have a lot of the good art. Okay. Just next to our city hall, have the one art gallery. Last week, they invite the, called Charles Christopher Hills, it's a famous artist. He, his artist, he have the exhibition right now and it's very good, especially he, everything, the painting, it's a painting on the newspaper. Okay. That's, it's, it's some unique things, okay? He's the first person to do that. So, so, so that's why, why I wanna share, because our, our city have a historical city, we have the famous food city, but we also hopefully have the, have the artist city for us too, you know? So, yeah, okay. So that's, I, I just shared my comfort, the report. In the closing section, then, and the next regular council meeting will be held on Tuesday, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three at six thirty PM, meeting adjourned at nine forty-eight PM. Thank you.